Call this work session to 1:30 and this is kind of a little different protocol, but I think it's it's sure welcomed, I think, by everyone here and appreciate all those who are in attendance. And I think we should have some really good discussion. But before we start, maybe we could have a councilman here throw off for us a reverence and we'll get started.
Dear kind fellow in heaven, we're so thankful for this opportunity we had to meet as a city council and staff. And we're thankful, Father, for the good circumstances in which surround us. We're thankful for the community we live in, thankful for the state and the nation we live in and the freedoms we enjoy. We're thankful for the leaders that we have and we ask you to bless them. They will be guided, inspired, and level-headed in the decisions they make, especially at this time during this pandemic. I ask you, Father, to bless all those who have been affected by this illness, that they will be blessed and watched over and protected. That they will be able to overcome and endure this short time, this trial that we are all facing in our community and our nation. I ask you, Father, for protection and guidance on our great nation as we go through our election cycle. That thou would bless those who are involved in our elections, that they will be fair and level-headed, that all will go well. And their constitution will shine through as it has been written by our founding fathers. We're grateful for the city council and those involved. And we ask for a blessing upon us as we discuss the items we have on our agenda. I ask you to bless the good citizens of Hooper and bless our community from harm or accident or disaster. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Well, thank you. So we'll just get right into our discussion items. We invited Sherri Bingham to be here since she oversees the events, that kind of puts those together. And so when we get to that part, I didn't know whether you would you want to discuss the events first or possible? Or would you like to discuss recreation improvements first? That recreation improvements is listed there first. We've kind of talked a little bit about that. But what what would you like to discuss about recreation improvements?
Well, and Sherri can chime in on this too because she does all the grants for us.
Yeah, I know. Kind of go back to we we threw out that we were going to try to get together and do some stuff with grant and have some committees. And then it was kind of at least for us, it's like, okay, what's the next step? What do we need to be doing? What should we be helping with? I think a couple of the talk here and there, it's like, all right, and what are we focused on? Are we focused on the right things for grant grants? Right, and that's when it comes to the parks, I think we took a walk. Last time we talked about it, we took a walk up to the parks and we went to the park here. Because I think Sherri had commented, she brought like the rec center, that there was an idea, concept for to go east of the the older park in that field, easy fish fish ditch. And I don't think maybe we were all one of that. So I think it's more trying to just kind of map some things out. I mean, I have a note here that just says basically when it comes to parks is, you know, what what do we want to see? Sooner than later and what do we want at vision, right? Well, the rest of our vision is the town, four or five parks. I did have a chance to drive over to the Wildwood Park and look at that and the ground over there. And you know, it's a nice piece of land, but there's not there's not anything there.
Suffered.
Nice playground.
Yeah, it's a hard going playground, nobody else. As far as, you know, a bowery or different things that
Right.
That, you know, talking with
Do we have a small bowery on one side of that?
Yeah.
There is a different way. That's right. That's right. Sorry, my brain.
All right, you were just
It's a little sidetracked, but I am excited for the like I talked with Sherri that the bowery going out here is going to be nice. I think it's going to be creative for the park. So to me, it's like more brainstorming for the rec is what I was hoping to talk about.
So are you thinking of maybe talking about what we could apply for as far as grant grants? Because, you know, there's been some things thrown out. The three things I specifically remembered was a pickleball pickleball court and a mist, what do you call them?
Splash pad.
Spat splash pad.
Splash pad is something that I was looking at the other day in late in the morning and I was like, that would be so cool.
And interestingly enough, you know, this dump station for recreation vehicles that was brought up. We no sooner brought that up, this will be kind of interesting to you. Oh, you saw it, so you saw it.
You told me that somebody
Put put it on, said, hey, we just moved to Hooper, where can we go do this? Hey, and then there were a bunch of responses, go to Clinton City. By that night, we get I get a little email, not a little, it was pretty long actually, from the Clinton City mayor and said, we have had such an influx of people coming over here. We had one of our officers run the license plates, they're all coming from Hooper. So we have signs there that say for Clinton residents only, but we'll put up bigger signs. So that that chain of events kind of would lead us to believe that there are a lot of
There's pretty good demand.
A good demand for that, sure.
I think we talked about a mayor, when I had come over, snuck over, I was watching the bathrooms installed, when you just got that email. Because I believe you had talked about a potential moving the dirt from this back area on the that's out of the park. And that there might have potential to put a station there. Is that?
Yeah, I'd say that's a possibility. Yeah, I can get it get used if we build one.
Well, then it'd be close enough where we're we could kind of make sure it's not, well, if you vandalize one of those. But at least it's close enough to where we can, we'd be going by it all the time. So my question is, would that qualify for rat grant? Is there anything that would help us with that? Maybe just have to look into it, maybe.
I I don't think so.
It'd be stretching a rat grant.
Yeah. Recreation, well, returning from recreation.
Yeah, we, all right.
It's not what you'd like, rat rats are more for community use type items, right? Is that correct?
Well, I can say the criteria too, and I don't I don't know how that would be in under like parks recreation or certainly not like cultural.
How much do we think it would cost to put one in?
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
I mean, what's what's the ballpark?
Put a process together, but I don't think it's going to be mostly concrete work. And we however we connect to our sewers.
Sure, okay.
But we're not going to have like our own impact fees and that sort of thing.
Right, right.
Tracy and I could probably put something together.
I would like to see a ballpark figure if because if it's not a lot of money, you know, we can, you know, we've got the money somewhere. Let's just do it. I mean, if it doesn't qualify as a ramp around, I think we talked about, I think it'd be a great idea.
You need some kind of design with a pull-through though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you couldn't have them back in and
No, you're going to come through a car.
You'd have to have a pull-through.
I think you want to make it, there's always going to be somebody that telescopes loose or something. You want to make it so it's easy to wash.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Triple stop, I just don't call that anymore, but triple stop has a pretty nice alongside the car.
Yeah, they do. But you can't get to them.
Well, they charge you. No, they charge you. Apparently you didn't put that on on the Facebook thing, right? Okay, it didn't, it didn't, we didn't get any letters from them, so. But anyway, is there an order of priority that the council would like to see this happen? Or if there's other things, I mean, those are three things I
Well, we said, we in in budget meeting, if I remember right, so we we said $250,000 aside towards a pickleball slash park enhancement. I mean, I I think that's a project for me personally that I would like to see pushed forward to apply for grant money for. And then depending on what we do, I I'd like to see something next spring actually start to take place as opposed to just docking. I mean, we you guys jumped, this is amazing. You guys ought to see the bathrooms after this, the bathrooms are super cool, like the way they're built, well, like inside, it's it's pretty.
I need to go see it. I've never seen a super cool bathroom, so I'm going.
The mayor called me excited. I wasn't here as excited as when the mayor called out.
You guys need to get a hobby. If you think looking at bathrooms is super cool.
I came into the tour and then I was like, super excited. I told everyone at work, I said, this is super cool.
Okay.
I was excited.
So have you looked into costs for pickleball? Have you talked to West Haven or Roy City or any of those?
So everything that I that I everyone I've talked to is not going to be actual numbers, but I know for that dollar amount, we can easily do eight courts.
Eight? So you've seen the West Haven ones?
I play at it three times a week.
Those are packed every night almost.
So every night and every morning, we we played Monday morning and there was probably fifty, sixty people there playing.
And then the ones over here, on point three hundred?
They have lights.
Always packed. We were playing dim lights on a muscle, so.
They went there and it was packed. We went over here, there's nobody.
Oh, okay.
So
Do they, do the lights just come on? I mean, they're all
Lights show up automatically at West Haven at ten thirty at night, there's a timer. They come on automatically with the darkness and then they show up automatically.
Almost like Emma Russell's where you set the timer yourself and it goes off no more than sixty minutes.
Yeah, because we used to go play, and then we're also earlier in the morning turn lights on before it was
And then have something that just shuts it off at ten thirty for good.
Just on night, there's no power.
Or eleven, these are until eleven.
I think eleven, ten thirty was weird, it showed us last last Friday night and I was like, you know, seems like eleven o'clock shouldn't. Hopefully there's something too bad, but maybe, I don't know.
So this is a four court setup.
Well, I I so so this is what I would like from the city council. So I will schedule a meeting, but I feel like I need a little more direction. You know, I know there'll be like two representatives that come from city council to this meeting on rent grants. But I think it would be really good if you collectively as a body said, okay, this is our order of priority. Because then we could have a couple of planning commission people and even a couple of community members. But I think it should come from you first in a list of orders. So I think that's what you need to discuss. What do you really want first? Because you the money that was set aside for the pickleball court came from the rec center. So you so you really probably can't do both. So you need to decide, okay, do we want to possibly do a pickleball court? Playground here, maybe a splash pad and not the rec center? Or if you're really thinking of a rec center, you're probably going to have to really focus on that money being for rec center. And then hoping that we can get round grant money for pickleball or playground or something else. But you can't have the money really allocated in both places because it doesn't work. So I think if you just discuss and decide, and I have some figures on pickleballs, I've done it running before. But see what your priorities the priorities are.
The rec center, didn't we talk about there being administrative? Who's going to who's going to open it and close it and take care of?
My struggle with the rec center is accessibility to the citizens on a daily basis. That I I think it's a great idea and for our community events, it's definitely something that we're eventually going to need. My my last time we talked about that was exactly that, it was, you know. Okay, is someone going to be there or not? Because it's like, oh, how do you get the ball court in?
Who's going to open it?
Who's going to open it? Who's going to be there at seven in the morning so you can go play? Or if it's got basketball courts, who's going to monitor that someone's not in there smashing? So we then we're like, maybe hire a staff member, do we have, you know, how does it, what does that look like? I don't know. My thought is that splash pad, the pickleball court, those type of things are, I guess, in my brain, more tolerable. And easier to get out there and let the community enjoy. I think that rec center is something that will be enjoyed, but I but it's also a lot of money. And I always questioned this, like the scale that we talked about with with Bear Green. I was never really happy with the scale of it. It it and it might have changed, but the scale that I remember talking about was basically the size of a full basketball court with a stage.
About the size of the Lieber County Fair, have you been in any of theirs? At the Lieber County Fair, running out there thousands of It'd be similar structure to that. They would have a kitchen on one end or one of those has a kitchen on one end, but I don't think there are a lot of them that's really impressive.
Sorry, I don't know.
So I would, well, I would like to see order of preference. I I think a playground here would get used a lot, much more than a splash pad and splash pad. Not against the splash pad, but also that's, I mean, you can't use that year round where as you can a playground. So I would say a playground and pickleball courts would be my priority. So and beyond that, obviously the dump but station, but I don't think that's even going to be included in any of this. So that's just something I think would be great if you guys did do a cost estimate and then see if we can find the money for that.
I agree with you. I I agree with you that the playground is the top priority and this pickleball court is the second priority.
Can you move forward with the pickleball court and still apply for a rent grant?
Yeah, so you're thinking the same way I'm doing, because I my thought is
Can we start now planning it and apply for the rent grant first of the year? And if we get the money, great. If not, we still move forward with it. Can we do that?
What's planning it? Location, doing cost estimates and things like that, so.
Location, get bids.
Like it's in and all in place and
Do you forget the money?
You have to do that anyway.
You only got anyway.
For the right
We really should have it all that planned out front anyway for the grant application.
Right.
Right.
Well, you also have to have some community support to
Yeah.
And the more support you put in, the greater chances get.
So do we
So you so you want to keep track of the planning, all that has a cost and and show that as your community share.
Have we ever thought about doing one in both parks?
No, because I mean, I think we just start, you know, like a four and a four as opposed to an eight.
Or six and a six.
Six and six, so. It'd be interesting to see what the cost is.
That's all there is.
I I thought I don't have a hard cost. I I can definitely go meet some of the cities and get that, plenty of cities put one in. You know, just put the one in out there at the Smith, it's it's down at Smith Park down there, West Smith Networks. Put a really nice court out there as well, so.
Yeah, you're talking just west of Smith and Edward, right? That's that's really nice facility.
And then Barnes Park, I work out by Barnes Park, they have a really nice setup out there as well, so.
I think if you called Roy City, ask them the details on him at Russell Park, how much that was, who they got to do it. Called West Haven, see the details on that one and then maybe even Far West. Got the details on that, see who their contractor was, if they were happy with that.
Would that be, Sherri, would that be good for me to call them?
Yeah, let me, I think I have that all written down, but I brought to a meeting previously, let me see.
So any other input on priorities or?
I like what you said.
I think for parks, but those are two two things.
Playground and and pickleball courts.
By the time we get the pavilion over here, we have a bathroom and you get a playground, this becomes a park.
Right.
Before then, it's a soccer. And I don't mind, so just sort of, you know, my daughter plays soccer, my kids play, I like I like soccer. So I'm not opposed to soccer people being here. It just it gives the gives other people a chance to use the park.
Right.
In a different way.
That would be a nice addition to the city.
I I was joking with the gentleman I worked with that that they play out here, this is their own field, I think, or I don't know. But it was part of the discussion a year ago, I said, hey, bathrooms are going to be there, because life said, so good, because Max, who's like a warrior, he has to paint a tree a lot. I'm like, yeah, I'd watch the kids run back here and have to find a tree field, it'd be nice to.
So with all this going on, do we talk about increasing the parking here or?
Well, you see, that's the other thing, as I drove around, do you do you push that? And Sherri, you might have to, but but as you look at parking, so there's a couple ways, right? You can build a parking lot, you can push parking in from the road so far and make a couple layers of stalls, I don't know. But we were talking about master planning for the park in that route or parking lines or
Not really in parking expansion, I was thinking about it the other day and really between that. So we don't really, the, you know, if we didn't want to take something out of the fields, I think you could spend the parking lot west and east over closer to those tree lines. Without impacting anywhere that somebody plays. From outside of that, you'd have to go to a property west, you know, to acquire more property that we've talked about that a little bit, you know.
So I think it's if you add something more, you know, I mean, I know Bear lives on the trail, right? Sherri lives on the trail, that that road historically has been a a problem with even rec soccer with our parking being there, so.
Would you incorporate that, we're talking about parking, would you incorporate that in the grant if we had to increase parking for pickleball court? Or how do they?
You know, and one thought too is like when they did the park, you're talking about out by Smith and Edwards. I mean, they've actually done them in phases. So it's so they should receive a substantial amount of money that possibly could be pickleball court, playground. Rather than maybe that could be our major grant is for a park improvement and have it be parking lot. Can can we do that? Because I've seen them out, and that's how that one was, they did like a couple of phases. So it could be parking lot, pickleball courts.
Playground.
Playground.
And once you hit the first phase, second, third, easier.
Yeah.
Because they want to finish your project.
Yeah, so even if we did it in phases, but this is what I pulled up, I brought to meetings once before. This bidder cost in Utah, there an average pickleball court is twenty to forty thousand and that depends on what kind of surface you end up doing.
One court?
For one per court, twenty to forty thousand per court. And then then and so the forty thousand is more on the higher end for the fancy lighting. It also depends on if you like has post tension concrete, which I don't know if Jeri even know what that is, or asphalt.
Almost all almost all quality tennis courts are post tension, so they don't crack, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then we've also done basketball courts, you know, at the at the same time. And basketball courts on the low end are eleven thousand, average of thirty-five thousand, high end are seventy-six thousand in the end. That depends on what fancy lighting, everything you do around it. And then a playground, we've gotten some bids from this big T, they're the ones that are doing a pavilion. And they're, you can go anywhere from fifty-one to twenty. Yeah, you know, I've heard a few comments about Hooper schools that maybe wasn't quite as durable as we would want for a community park. And I think hate about fifty thousand for this, so we might be more in the upwards of a hundred thousand to get one.
I would say so the one we built at the old parks was like seventy-eight thousand then, so I'm thinking you're going to be
And it's been pretty durable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say that makes it great.
But we may want to look at that, it's like, you know, we were saying about phases, have, okay, this is our vision, what we want to have for this park. So the total cost would be this and you you always need to be able to put in really the higher percentage. And we try to match about fifty percent with money that we have down and the cost of labor. So if you say this is our first phase, so maybe even if first year, you know, we could try, but I don't know. I mean, then maybe another phase could be adding on, like we did pickleball playground and then maybe we don't get our community end up parking lot, but.
Definitely build a playground or the pickleball without parking, parking would be, to me, that'd be the niceties of the thing. If you want to be, you can park in a lot of places and there is a parking lot here.
So, I mean, eight courts, it costs us roughly three hundred thousand. I mean, that's pretty reasonable here. It's whether we want to put them in one spot or split them up or what exactly?
You do one spot, you only have one set of fancy and lights. You do them in two spots, you're done, you know, and it happens.
Well, maybe the cost, maybe the cost, if what you're saying, if you have multiplier, it might be a little less than forty thousand.
For one seven.
Thirty thousand or something, because you just have lights going here and here as opposed to it's all on its own.
So it's just
Maybe do some food for thought, the Wildwood Park, the ground up there is really poor. And we, when we built it, we put top soil in there, but the saltiness of the soil up there just converted the top soil over to not being gessoed. We put more fertilizer, more water on that park than any of the others and it looks the worst. So there's already a parking lot there that doesn't get used very much. Maybe that'd be a good location to consider for part of the pickleball.
But there's one at Emma Russell, just
No, that's true.
Half mile away.
There's definitely depth lower, I think, but I I do like the fact that
I'm good putting them all here.
I think all theirs, I mean, if you did a s- if you did six, that could be phase one.
Yeah.
And if we felt like it'd be better to do six in another location, then do that for your phase two.
Yeah. I like it.
Yeah, for phase one, you could see how much they're used.
Yeah, so I'd say do one phase and then see how it goes.
Yeah, see if it's used.
People are lined up there and we talked about doing a fifth.
Phase two could be a playground.
But I like the idea of Sherri how to do it in phases, you know, do it here and have it, there's three phases to it.
And there's other things too. Pickleball really is a crazy, everybody loves it, but not everybody in Hooper will play pickleball. You know, I had a few people say, well, hey, one time when they did the park, there was supposed to have been a walking trail around it.
Yeah.
Well, that that's true. So yes, I think pickleball is great, but there might even be some other things too to go along with that besides. You know, I don't know, we need to have all our hats just in pickleball.
Right.
Maybe we need to do pickleball playground, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, what these faces made, the splash pad, maybe a walking trail that would go around the park. So
Do they ever put basketball courts in combination with the pickleball court or not? That's the word. Well, you could never play both at the same time.
I did, I mean, West Haven does have a sand volleyball court right adjacent to the pickleball court.
But if you were lights in a parking lot, that certainly could be one of the phases would be get some basketball.
Yeah.
Like you said, a sand volleyball, I mean, you really just need to get a design that again, what would you would want to have for your phases to
I mean, you know, Hooper historically is, I know with tomato days, the volleyball tournament's been a big, big thing. And so do there are opportunities to invest in that type of stuff in most of our I think the good thing is that we have a meeting to talk about, because I feel like as a council, I don't talk about this very often with the group. And so to me, it's, I think this is vital conversation, just try to strip along for some ideas out to see what what do we want to focus on as a council.
Another thing to take into consideration too is there may not be as much grant grant money available next year based on COVID. You know, we don't know that, but they sent us out a message telling us that. So like the grant we received for Hooper tonight, they will allow us, we have to go out of extension report, but allow us to use that for next year. And they said maybe kind of consider that, so I don't know. I mean, maybe we need to look at, not get over the remaining spaces, but the overall picture, could you do it in two or three year phase?
Could with the pickleball court, I was just thinking, could you phase one and not put lights in if that was an expensive thing? And put that as part of the next phase?
Think, okay, too early, too late, not have lights.
Yeah, that's kind of the whole thing, total project.
That's, I mean, that's my experience, is people are there at six in the morning, like in the fall when it starts to dark and people are walking late. But I mean, I think we just have to determine the direction.
We play two, but it gets, I can't see it very dark with light and without light, so it doesn't make a difference.
So I agree with you, Sherri, like pickleball court is a option, but there are other things to draw the people from our community in. You know, I mean, I, once again, I was at Splash Pad the other night watching my daughter's soccer game and it was full of people. And and I thought, wow, it doesn't take that much space. How low the cost of those are, and that's just it, but as far as acreage, it was pretty small. Footprint was right by the little snack shop and but yet there was probably twenty or twenty-five moms with their kids and their dads. They were running through and theirs was all concrete, it looked like, which I thought, didn't seem very safe. But it must be as opposed to like Riverdale that has kind of that matte.
They're all concrete.
Are they?
I had a conversation with the the guy that's doing our pavilion, he's owns a company that does all that. But he goes after the state contracts, in fact, he owns, has the state contract for pavilions and whatnot, playgrounds. But I asked him what he thought about that and he says, I'll give you, he says, you need about two hundred and fifty thousand to do a splash pad ride. But he says, he's done eight of them this year and he said, the only negative feedback he's got is if you build it, they will come. He says, you'll fill your parking lot every day, all day long in the summer. And then he he explained to me that the water source is a big deal. And he suggested a city like us do a fresh water. And so it basically uses the water and you use it and you pay a big water bill. The other option is you recycle, but then you basically are in the municipal pool business. So you got to have someone certified in that, you got to do chlorine, you got to sample you. So he said, you probably would want to go fresh water, but just some info on that that he talked about.
I think our water bill would be astronomical.
What other, so do you need more information?
So just like you come up with just one like list, again, we'll schedule a meeting with whoever the two and who was it, Chris and, I don't know, who was it, Chris and Chris? I can't remember who's going to do.
I can't remember who, I would divide it up because we have three different things that we're going to apply for.
There were parks and trails.
Yeah, there was parks and trails and there's also the, you know, the other one, which are the cultural. But so if we did, then we'd have our meeting and say, okay, this is what the other ones are at some museums. So this is what city Um, so this is what city council would like us, and then get some other input and direction, but, but it would kind of have to have a, we have to have a concrete plan. You know, it can't just be, okay, this is good, because when we're writing the grants, it has to be very specific.
Is it, do you think a walking trail would be, I mean, obviously pickleball court, playground, those are pretty high priced items. Would, would it, would a walking trail be a lower, seems to me like that wouldn't cost nearly as much if you had a walking trail. I wonder if we gotta have, you know, some things that aren't as expensive?
Unless you do this as your major grant, lump all this, all this together.
Yeah, there could be some cost to walk, you know, depending what kind of construction, but concrete or asphalt, neither one are cheap, and then you gotta prep a ride.
Right.
Yeah.
Get it to drain, and asphalt, it's kind of like our trails we have now, it's great for a little while, but then it's gonna take some maintenance.
Right.
To keep it nice.
People in Hooper would like our walking trails to join.
Right, and I would like to, I would like to see that also, that was something I would like to.
Just because I have no one walking trails, um, close, someone, I don't even remember, said there's a whole lot of go heads that have grown entire walking trails out over here west of fifty nine.
Frida and Lakeview.
Yeah, and they said it was really, it could, I don't want a full trail.
West of fifty nine, we walk that every morning, I haven't noticed them there. My daughter and I did go dig at some along fifty nine hundred sidewalk, because that one water did not take care of them.
That's really bad, because I've, I've been walking through Lakeview and Elian.
You haven't seen them?
No.
No.
Well, I, I don't even remember, I told him that's where they is. He said they are walking along, which are go heads along trail.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the west, and we don't walk east, maybe it is east, but it would be nice if they connected somewhere.
And.
That walking trail to the one that goes over through Hooper landings.
Yeah.
And I think that plays into general plan, I think that's gonna be something we need to really incorporate into the general plan.
But you also have to include money to maintain it, that's what Jared's saying, and then they start to get cracks and things, I mean, then this is free, and that's when you work like for grant grants.
Right.
They're really dependent upon us to say, then who's going to maintain this after? If they're going to give us that tax money for a grant grant, then who, what money are we putting in to make sure it always stays nice? That they, you know, and that's, walking trails are constantly better nice, I mean, I'm saying that in support of the debate, our names.
So do we need to be detailed enough to talk about a location?
Yeah, I think we oughta just go to the, your, the planning commission, the other, the committee, if that's what you're talking about, and then just talk about doing it here around the city offices and doing a parking lot expansion, playground and pickleball courts. And see whatever they think of that. And then we can do it in phases depending on the cost. And. So Tracy, is that something, like, um, do you still have your planners in your offices, or who does that, who, who would put together the plan?
Um, I could draw it up and, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't, I mean, we have, we, we're doing all kinds of park planning, our, our landscape architects. I mean, big ones and small ones all over, and we're up there working around now on a fifty acre park in Syracuse, you know, and that, so. So, I mean, that, that type of expertise can certainly help with that.
Yeah, because wouldn't we need that to not only build it, but to go for the grant grants, wouldn't we, wouldn't we need a?
Well, I mean, this, certainly have enough, have enough experience with, you know, what they cause from construction, and it helps Sherri without, without getting interrupted.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, that's my recommendation, is that we take those three items, this location, and see what the committee and the planning commission think of it.
And, that's good.
Yeah.
I like them.
So where is, where are we thinking, over here, over here?
Well, I think this parking lot was set up to be mirrored, right? So you mirror the parking lot here, and then maybe the park, maybe the playground goes behind the parking lot?
Mirrored, what, mirrored, where's?
I'd like to take this and duplicate it.
Kind of like that back here.
Oh.
Like the parking lot we parked in, duplicate it straight west, so you basically double the parking lot.
Okay, oh, right, this, oh, okay. Okay.
So Jared was talking about expanding it, east and west.
And Jared said east and west.
Yeah, there's room for that, but I don't, I mean, I don't know if you need to make it that big for a phase one, right? Like for a ball.
You probably could do one side or the other, Tracy, now is this look connect, probably gonna have to relay it out though, because you don't have to restructure it and, uh, because some of the other, if you moved in line, somebody.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So now, what are you thinking about, about the courts?
Are there more utilities and things on the east side of the building more west?
Back to the back off of the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that might be something to consider too.
Back end court?
Yeah.
You don't want us somewhere.
Well, where about, where, what about where the big dirt pile?
So if we got together, like, like safety planning commissions and these, we would, then.
Don't like rag west, don't like rag west.
So, who, so Cindy, you, and who else, is there somebody else on city council?
You got the trees, I mean, you don't want to start taking out trees.
That wants to kind of.
No, you're, you're.
Doesn't matter, we talk.
We talk to trees.
Let down enough room between the trees and the fence to put anything.
They're not listening, so.
Sorry.
Oh, no, who else is coming then, from city council, the representative city council for this, and I'll get the meetings scheduled, Cindy, Cindy, who else?
So we, we could, wouldn't be able to have a quorum, right?
Make sure you don't have a quorum, but you would be fine if we don't have a quorum.
So two of us and two of s- planning commission.
Yeah, you can't have more than three, if two of us.
Yeah, so just one more person.
The pickleball court's kind of your main, doesn't matter, you have a lot of talk.
Chris?
So the three things I listed then were playground, pickleball court, and parking lot expansion, right, that's kind of a direction.
I, I know, I think when we were walking the park, I don't know where we could really concentrate, but the bathroom was here, and then there's the power here, and I think the thought was that the playground could go in between the playgrounds, but I don't know.
What the original thought when we did, I, it's been years ago, we did kind of a master plan for this park, and the thought process behind, behind putting it here was to. If you have kids playing soccer, maybe in young ones that wanted to play on, they could be seen from either field, and they weren't by the parking lot or a roadway.
Right.
Hmm.
Right.
Because you would want the pickleball court close to the parking lot, right?
You wouldn't?
You would, yes, I mean, firmly close to parking lot.
So close to the road, close to Forest Lieutenant, on either side?
Yeah.
Take out a sucker.
You'll just, you'll let us know, then you'll get in touch, and it sounds good.
Are we, are we good with that?
I think moving forward with that, that's, I don't know.
So this is complicated, but do you want to list anything for a phase two?
So the playground is phase two, right?
Well, we, I had a lot of questions at this phase one.
No, she's, she's got this. I would say.
Where I think about parking lot, this, this is for the major grant, right?
Oh, right.
I would say a trail, I think the trail would be, unless there's other.
No, the trail and Splashpad, no.
Phase two, phase three.
Yeah. Shooting for the stars, man on the moon.
Okay, so in addition to that, then, you can apply for three parking rights grants.
And then how much are those typically?
They are less than the two hundred thousand.
Because like this was one, right? What about putting in new bathrooms out at the park? What I call it.
So is the RV dump part of phase one?
No, that's, that's separate.
I didn't hear of that.
Oh, that's not a grant, sorry, that's, that's our all money, that's our all money, yeah.
That's separate.
I don't remember who I talked to, but I talked to someone about, you know, the restrooms at down Little Park are horrible, and we just keep kind of, and they fix them.
They're well maintained and clean, they're cold.
Yeah, and there's, and there's.
And they're hard to maintain, as opposed to this one, when you look inside this.
Yeah, they're not cool, this one out here, Chris. We're not here looking at this, you're inside it.
They don't really need any D A requirements, we intend it because they have a round, they do have something.
I think they.
They're not, they're not complicated.
You get in them with a wheelchair, none of the stalls are.
One, one thing they consider on the Splashpad, you have to have restrooms within fifty feet, I believe. I could be wrong on the measurement, but close, and so you'd have to plan that in the Splashpad project or build it next to a facility that's existing.
So that could be a grant, replacing the old restrooms, down the park?
I think it'd be great, I think it'd be a great grant for down there.
What else did, what else does it need down there, Jared?
Just kind of depends what direction you want to head, we know we've invested a lot in that equestrian side or the arena part, and you know, there's a number of projects you could do on that. Probably just making that main part of the park more usable, kind of like we've talked with some of these amenities, but then I think we also gotta keep in mind, that's where we have tomato base and. You know, just making sure all of the plants kind of blend together.
So I have a question, when I'm down there again looking at it, so growing up a number, we put a ballpark, ballpark was there, then we put in dirt back in the day. Always kind of sliding, um, it's still pretty much concrete foundation out there, if you try to hunt beneath this, what place would I go? Is there any deed or development of that baseball area that, that would be beneficial for the community? I don't know how often you choose, or if it doesn't get used because it's a mess, or if it's a mess, and do we do our way with it, and put something else there?
We looked into improving it once, and the, the people, we had, I don't do baseball, my family doesn't, but we got some people that did, and they said. It's popular, you know, all the other cities, but they want like a fourplex, they don't want one field yet, they wanna have leagues there and have three or four games going on at once, they just didn't have the room.
There's usually a home run fence, I know, packed in there, I don't know where that fence is, if it exists anymore.
We still have the little town.
I remember they did that gaming home run fence, so, and that was pretty cordial back in the day, but, um, one, one field is pretty unusual.
And we have the two baseball courts here, and they rarely get used.
Yeah.
It's, it's like Jared says, unless you have a fourplex, nobody wants to use it.
Because you can't run a softball, you can't run.
You can't have, yep.
Well, we can, we can, I would say, you know, maybe the restrooms, and then we can always, I mean, we don't have to have this right now, we can, we can think about what else, what else we need to do.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, 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 I think. Although it might be scary, you can't hurt the whole house, basically, and say, what are some additions we'd like in the park?
Yeah, that's scary.
Well, playground, pickleball court, parking lot expansion, new restrooms.
I think you have all new projects, that'd be great.
Is that? And that, that's quite a, that'll work good.
Quite worth it.
Hey, can we, is it, are you, are you comfortable with that?
Did you?
Move on to upcoming city events?
Did you put the RV dump?
Oh, RV.
She was, we're gonna look into that, right, we're gonna price her.
There's no, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And not the grant, yeah.
We'll just grab it on my list here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, and our two museums are the other ones, and the ones I, where I said when I came before, we, we applied for this insurance together, but we've kind of talked about how many, I tried to message for that one. So you could announce things, that was one thing, our tomato base concert, but that money will roll over, so we won't need to worry about that. And then the other thing, if you remember not, but we talked about these Hooper historical markers like Roy does, that tells different sites, that we, that would fit under arts and museums. So those were just, and if you have any other thoughts?
Where did the marquee fit?
We thought about putting one out here.
No, no, what, what?
Always under arts and museums, you could get it.
Same okay.
So, and.
I think that would be great.
It was like thirty-three thousand was what the cost was from that, and the Hooper Day's concert, we already have that, we already have that money from this year saved, and then the historical markers.
Something like that.
We're getting traffic, but.
That's true.
Kind of.
You're talking about the road.
They're big to find.
I think the historical markers, I'm kind of, I quite like those, I think they're very interesting.
I think that, I like.
So speaking of historical markers, I got an interesting call from Catherine Pennard, who I believe is Benny Wilson's sister. Um, and she said something about Mary Flowers that told her sister that her house was an historical monument.
It was a historical monument.
Anyone anything about that?
We had, uh, talked to Jack Voizard, whose wife is Isabel, and his.
She wants to know if that was real, she won't talk, want me to talk to the city as well, actually, we had a work meeting.
Well, and I, because they said this had been done in the past, and I actually talked to Jared about, you know, moving in a historical house, because they said they even had a new place for it down here. Uh, on Mitchell's Corner, corner of fifty-one hundred south and fifty-nine hundred west. But there's quite a bit to that, I mean, just getting it moved there so it doesn't, we don't wreck it.
I love the fact that you used Mitchell's car.
You like that?
Yeah, that, that on Spook Alley.
Spook Alley Road, I don't know, sorry, but anyway, so I, so it's, you know, I think that's something that, that could be addressed, and it would be, I don't know. Maybe a grant, grant money could be used to do something like that, but it is a, a, a more complicated thing than what. That what the family may think that it is.
Yeah, and I don't want to ramble on that, it just, it was interesting, you're talking about historical, because I was like, I was like, three days ago, I got a call from.
No, that's, they, uh. Uh, Jack Voizard called me about that very thing. Do they want their house on, we have, on the, on the historical registry?
Well, from what I gathered, they, they didn't want to do anything with it, they felt like it was something of.
Well. Well, the property's been sold, is what they told me, to.
Oh, she, she, you know, I'll, I'll try and buy it.
And, and he'll just, he's just gonna knock it down, so that's what they told me, so they are trying to preserve it.
So they're, they're still saying.
And it is one of the original log houses, uh, that was here in Hooper. But.
Kind of my concern, I think it would get a little bit mixing public funds with private property, and then if they were gonna donate it to us, but also it could be a can of worms if you start moving that and the thing falls apart or something, I guess.
Why, uh, why would, a pretty good chance of that, Jared, if you go down and look at it, I mean.
I mean, I don't.
I don't think that's something the city wants to own, I think that's something wants to say, but they might, but we don't do that.
Well, I just.
We do work on historical register houses all the time, and they're really tough. Well, it's because from the perspective that, um, it's out of your hands, the historical registry tells you what you can and can't do with its own. It's not like you can just go in and.
Yeah.
Right.
Redo the house, I don't know, I don't even know what we're talking about, I don't even know where Spook Alley Road is, so. And so, you know, talk, talk about East Upper, I think maybe, I know a road over there, but.
I mean, if you do the Hooper, you're off.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, but there's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff there, and I think the city definitely, in my opinion, does not want to get involved.
I don't think so either.
It's just.
Well, apparently they had talked about it at the time, and it was, that, that could have been years ago.
Right. Right, and, and as a homeowner, if they want to be involved with that, that's great, but it's a labor of love and money, a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, to me, if there's, if there's a committee that organizes in the town, and somebody's trying to raise money to save a project like that, then that's viable, but I don't know if the city itself should be involved.
Yeah. Yeah. We absolutely don't want them coming to us and say, oh, by the way, we need a hundred thousand dollars, because we're gonna remove this now, or whatever it is, and that, it's a tough, it's a really tough deal.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you've taken that, when you get on, something on the historical register, because like I say, we do work in those on occasion, that it's not a decision you're gonna make as a homeowner. And so the city definitely doesn't want to get in the middle of that, because this committee tells you what you can and can't do, and what you have to do, actually, so.
Sure.
And I don't honestly even think that own, their family isn't agreeing to what they want to do, and I think it depends who you tell it to.
Uh, for sure not. So I don't know if they didn't make headway with me, and they called you, or they didn't make headway with you, and they called you, I, I don't know.
I don't know, like, like I said, she introduced herself, and.
Yeah.
She said, like, her sister had talked to the mayor, but she wanted to talk, yeah, she wanted to talk to me herself, and I was like, okay, no problem, man, I'm here for it.
Her sister.
Okay.
Next.
Now coming to you next.
Uh, upcoming city events?
Mm-hmm, so hopefully I received a newsletter, so the first thing we have coming up is we are going to do our long awaited history camp, which will be happening in the park. And you probably saw, we are separating that out into four different times and two different days, and we're going to have it at this park, because there, we felt like we could, well, this park's fifteen acres, which is bigger than the other park. So we'll only have one age group here, um, Saturday mornings, like one, two, and three year olds, and we'll have them around both of these baseball fields, so they can line up all the way around. Um, parents are going to come in, but we put down, you know, they need to wear masks, social distancing, the older groups, parents can't, one, two, and three year olds, parents sometimes need to, because kids are little. Anyway, so that's Saturday morning, if anybody wants to come and help us put out this stuff, um, we have an eagle scaffold already, it's all divided and backed, ready to go. So, um, our youth council is meeting that morning at seven thirty to start to put out that stuff that will be available on that morning. So we'll do one at nine o'clock, as soon as that one's done, then we'll still be, because it lasts, you know, for three and a half minutes, and then we'll put out.
If, if, yeah.
Seriously, and then we'll put out for the next group that will start at ten thirty, so that should give a longer break in between, and then we'll do it again on Monday morning, which is another phase. So again, at seven thirty be here, we'll put it out for one group, as soon as they be, we'll put it out for the other, and I think it should work.
Yeah, Shauna, uh, grass, kind of, you gonna sanitize the grass or?
I don't, if you have all contacts, I know somebody that will spray it before them.
If that needs to be done, we. Yes, if we need that done, it'll, it'll be taken care of, for sure.
They just put up with me.
Shauna will forewinter with the.
It would have to be, I would be in my bunker with my Florida smile.
So, it's, 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 people around spraying this, so.
Anyway.
Someone asked if they're hiding tomatoes, and I said no, no kids would want a tomato when they got a tomato, so this can be prizes. Okay, and then also on that Saturday night fireworks again from here. Okay, and then also on that Saturday night fireworks again from here, if anybody asks you why we're doing them here, it's because it's a little easier to control. You have people that come down on the playground, there's really nothing for anybody to come here for. I mean, they play soccer, but it's easier to kick out a soccer than it is at the playground full of kids.
Yeah, at nine o'clock at night, the whole thing's fire, so.
Yeah. So, that's, that is, that's, it's Mary, is it in our shirts, you know, that you know, go in and get one, but, um, they're cute.
They're awesome.
They really are, with the mask and everything, and it's.
It's a tomato, it's cool.
Yeah, and then it says, here it wasn't, so that's what, that's what happened with it. Okay, so the next thing coming up is on our health fair, which is on the twenty-first of September, and last month you, or last meeting you approved for the fifteen hundred dollars for the mail vouchers. In the meantime, the Fremont Five Coalition is also giving us fifteen hundred dollars, so we will have a total of three thousand dollars, so we will have five hundred mail, free mail coupons at six dollars a plate. We have three food trucks that are coming, my case is lucky slice pizza, and it's like slow and something, it's a barbecue that's coming. We have a lot of food vendors, I mean, a lot of, um, health and safety vendors that are coming, and again, we'll social distance, put our booths outside. Blue shots will probably be in here, because some people, they probably see women having their shots, but I think that should work. And then the other thing we put in the newsletter was the Halloween hunt, and that's on October tenth, and again, that's outside, we don't have to get a mask added permit, because we are any of the members that have to be here anytime. We thought we won't do hot chocolate and cookies this year, because that's a little bit tricky how to do that, but Smith's Food King had already given us a thousand dollars for Hoover Tomato Days. So we're going to take that money and buy candy and have little gift bags of candy that the kids can come through and get a little bag of candy, which will be fine, yes, not hot chocolate, but. If things have changed and we feel like the health department will allow that, we will, but if not, we won't, so. Those are the upcoming, and then in December, if we can, we'll see, but we'll have Santa come to town again, and that would be the first Monday in December. That was like the fifteenth December or the seventh?
I think it was a little.
And.
Like, when she says that, I'm like, Santa just, Santa just came to town, right?
Yes, once, once a year he comes.
December seventh. We planned our head, you making fun, so we planned so far.
No, when you just, when you said that, I was just, in my brain, I'm thinking, didn't, like, Santa just came over here and like, did that, it seems like that was a motherfucker or something.
Yeah, no, it's December.
I'm just getting older, Sherry, that's all.
Yeah, things come real fast, and we're hoping, you know, um, one reason I'll just say why we got the money from the coalition is because we are the only city that have anything planned. And they said we were, they were glad the city asked to plan something, and they already had set up a part of money to help with the family food night, and we are one that have an activity planned, and it's having a family food night, and so they approved it, and they're asking.
Very nice, that's cool, thank you.
Any questions, any ghosts, the outside location, if people don't feel comfortable, they won't come.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's just, that's just how it is, and we could've found a place and tried to save the Easter, not the candy, the chocolate already is starting to get a little bit more flaky chocolate, um, that they've stepped down most, but then we're storing them for a year. And that, it, it's not as easy as it sounds, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, uh, so we'll move on to item number two, discussion on current subdivision improvements and escrow requirements. So we had Jared come in, were you the one that submitted that, maybe you could?
Uh, well, I didn't submit it, we've talked about it in the past, and one of the concerns that I've had as far as they resist, um, I, I guess, and most people know my, my stance. I don't have a problem setting money aside for curb and gutter, if that's a, a reality. I think it's weird to set money aside for curb and gutter in places, especially on a one or two lot subdivision on a road, that's got eight miles before we ever put curb and gutter on that road. I don't know why, we, I don't know why, so I don't know what the fairway is, I don't have, sadly, I don't have a solution, I just have to crack, right, I wish I had a solution. I know we've talked, uh, on and off, almost, about different opportunities, maybe the money instead of being held in escrow for as long as it currently is, maybe the time is a little shorter. Uh, I don't know, but I wanted to have a discussion at least, to see what other people felt, um, and that's probably where we're at right now, as far as my friends. What's the feeling of the council, what's the feedback of the, the staff, I know they're involved with that, um, it, it just, to me, it. Every time I drive down a road and I see that blunt place, maybe they decided to put the curb and gutter in, and you have curb and gutter in the middle of nowhere, and I think. When will we ever as a city pay to tie into that, and I don't know that as a city we will, not in my lifetime.
Yeah, oh, actually, even today, we had kind of an interesting example, why we, why we've done that in some places, and, and it's really hard to determine exactly where, and you're, you're right, but. You know, down here on forty-six hundred, you know, we had three lots built by raw miles, and we got nothing but heck, out of requiring that right there. Well, today, we got a rezon request for the property around the corner that it'll all tie into, you know, so if we didn't have it, then, you know, then who, who would've ever done it? Uh, I agree, it's, uh, it's, it's really hard to say, okay, it, it makes sense here, because we know something that we don't know.
Right.
You know, but, uh.
Probably more likely than us going and doing a project, is there'll be a project, a development project near it, that it can tie to, and. You know, the, the flip side of that, you can, you can ask an old city councilman, Cook, lives in one of those homes, you know, it's the driest summer ever, but. I took Mary Flowers down there when it rains, and night and day difference, how their yards are when you get a week of rain, you know, everything drains, I don't know, so. The functionality of it's good, the application, I don't think we'll ever have one rule that's totally, just makes everything great for everybody. I think we have to be fair, whether you're a one lot developer, a three lot developer, a forty lot developer, you, you should put the same infrastructure in, and pay for your portion of, of infrastructure.
You're, I guess, okay, I agree with that, you're, you're, you're not necessarily arguing that the value of having curb and gutter.
No, just if it doesn't make sense, we like the ability to.
No.
Just asking for someone to escrow funds.
Yeah.
Right.
If it doesn't make sense.
Sixty-nine hundred west.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, fifty-nine hundred south.
That's what I was gonna say. The ability, and if it doesn't make sense, we don't.
I, I think what's happened is third lot was a year, one time, I think he had one lot, one on, on the far side of his house, and it's like. When I looked at that, I was sort of divided, I'm like.
But that's the area right there he's talking about, that they've put in for a zone, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just further, further, right in the corner, but.
So my feeling, we've been doing this since I was on the planning commission, and you do have people, I mean, no, I don't wanna pay taxes. But it's something, I think, that has been required of them, they know upfront, coming in, that, hey, you need to escrow this money. It's, I think it's fair, I think it's the most fair, because, eh, are you going to randomly say, no, you live far enough away that we're not gonna make you escrow it? So, I think it's, that's kind of a decision that I don't wanna make on every call, that somebody comes in and does a subdivision, whereas right now, it's black and white, you, you need to put it in escrow. It, you, you get the money back, so, now, yes, ten years, but, and also, I don't think it's a huge, what?
At least if you live there.
Well.
I think we really have three options, do nothing, do what we're doing, or, you know, I just, I just build a house that there's no curb and gutter. Well, they made me sign a deferred improvement agreement, and that's recorded on my lot, stays with it forever, and it basically says, when they put improvements in, you will pay for them. And if you don't, we'll put a tax lien against your property, and eventually we'll take your property to pay for them, I think that's a lot harsher than what we're doing, I think what we're doing is pretty fair to the people.
I think whoever you built sucks, just won't go on now.
And that's pretty typical, if you Google that, about, most of the counties and a lot of cities have that.
Plus, another thought is, okay, so you've required this for the last eight years, what, what are you gonna do? So the next person, oh, well, we'll give yours back because we're not requiring it now, that to me seems like that would create a problem right there.
My, my take on the, the deal, and my suggestion would actually be, if, I don't think that we wanna task anybody with saying, yeah, you do, yeah, you don't, yeah, you, you know, be. Because then, I think we're gonna open up a whole can of worms on somebody saying, well, I'm just as far west as they are, why, you know, I don't think you wanna go in it. My suggestion would be to make it maybe a five year, instead of a ten year. Still fair, straight across the board, I, I feel like that's, uh, giving everybody a little bit more, you know, Chris is still gonna live five years, so he'll get his back.
Well, and just so everyone knows, the reality is, I don't have the answer, and I, and I, I mean, I, you know, I, but I was curious to see if, as a council, and that's why I'm super excited, I actually have a work meeting like this, because. Question would be, what do other people feel, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and hear that feedback, because I think, you know, when you and I talked about before, I, I was like, maybe that makes more sense.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a perfect answer for this, by the way, I think whatever we do, somebody's gonna say, well, why'd you do that, or why didn't you take all the, whatever we do. I just feel like that's somewhat of a compromise, and then we don't have to put somebody in a position of saying, you choose on who is, you know, who's gonna have that, who isn't gonna have it, I think that's a problem.
So what about, so what about changing it to the language on Jared's house?
But the downside I can see in that is I think, are we willing to take it that far?
Are you gonna go to court?
I would bet most people, when you go hand them a bill for thirty thousand dollars to put curb gutter in sidewalk and road bench, and don't have that, right, you chat? So when we do it up front, most people build it into the financing or into their project, if, if we defer it, I think it's like getting blood out of a turnip for most people. And then, geez, do we really wanna tax lien someone's house and take it out?
This came up, this came up a couple of years ago in West Merton, and it was all over the news, people came out just in, from the neighborhoods going, we're not doing this, we're not paying for this, I don't care what that agreement says. You know, and, uh, it was, it was pretty brutal for the, the council at that time, and maybe, maybe push it down the road.
Yeah.
I agree with what Tracy said, though, that, the three lots that everybody thought was stupid, right, everybody thought, you're making me put in the curb gutter aside for what?
I think just the developer.
But now you have a rezon, you have a rezon, and now it makes sense, you know, so maybe you do just leave it the way it is.
I, and I don't think the five or the ten years makes much difference, are they gonna say, am I gonna get my money back in five years, am I gonna get it back in ten, I don't think that's really making the most difference.
So what, what, what interest rate are we, are we accruing for that money?
We're not.
We're not.
And the other side of that is, we're also not asking for anything but just concrete.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't improve, it doesn't tie the road in to the curb and gutter in the future, and, and we're not asking for.
Or storm grain.
Or storm grain, we're not asking for any, any in, inflation or interest, or, you know.
It's only curb and sidewalk, and it doesn't, the, what they put in doesn't go up with the prices of it, and you're stuck with what it is. So if it's eight years later, you're using prices for eight years ago.
Yeah, but it's right at the time, we try to use a number that is e- equivalent to what other developers are having to pay for curb gutter and sidewalk, so.
So it says in number four, in the event, that, within X amount of years, we haven't used it, the escrowed money, along with the accumulated interest, will be returned to the developer.
Maybe, maybe.
I think you put it in an interfering account, so they get whatever.
Okay, so, so maybe that's.
So, one percent or whatever the going rate is.
Yeah, half a percent or whatever, yeah.
So what I, what I'm saying is, we're not inflating it, you know, in the future, so there is.
Right.
And it's a real base package, you're saying, really base, yeah.
So my last question on the whole deal is, how long has this ordinance been in place, since we've been a city, twenty years?
This, the, the, the actual ordinance that says it's required, curb gutter and sidewalk are required, has been in, I don't know that it was in the very initial ordinance, but it's been at least fifteen years.
It was there.
It was.
The part that's new is, is the ability to escrow, initially they, they required.
Actually, and I, I, actually, I'm not even sure if we have that in the read, I couldn't find, I couldn't find it, I think it was just a policy decision, uh, to avoid having to build a little piece of it.
How long have you lived, were you, since your house has been, cause you still have a drain ditch and on an acre lot, right?
Did you pay it?
No, cause it was an established lot with Weaver County.
Is it a half acre?
Point six.
Ooh, point six.
Well, there was a place, if you could have a zone.
One thing I don't know, if we can clean it up, or if it's just kind of a casualty of, of the nature of the thing, is I think a lot of times. A builder, a contractor comes in, pays that, charges the homeowner in fees or whatever, well, we pay whoever paid it. So the homeowner doesn't always get that back, sometimes it was the builder, but we don't know if he charged them for it, and then we return it to them, the homeowner may not even know about it.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah. So, i- in that fifteen years or whatever, that we've been doing escrow, how many times have we actually used that money? I can think of zero, since I've been playing this game, I don't know.
Yeah, there's one right now, um, one we just missed, just missed it.
So, so I'm with Jared, I mean, it should go back to the homeowner, you know, they're paying it, so somehow, we can rewrite this to say.
Just put the current property.
Yeah, but how many houses sell in that, in that ten years, so then.
That's true, that's true also.
Which one, are we gonna track this home down and get him back his money, I, I, I think it's fine the way it is, but.
Curb. I mean, you, you, you keep track of who paid the money to you, rather than the property owner, or rather than, the, the property goes to the person, right?
So, so, like, most of the time, like, if you have any escrow, right, so the, the developer will have the escrow in place, usually with, like, this curb gutter and sidewalk escrows there, they are like the homeowner of the property. Um, in some instances where they've sold the property, most often what happens is, is that they are aware that they paid that money, and so usually there's an addendum attached to the sale of the home, and so they bring that in to show us that they are. They are, that we are sure to donate to them after the ten years.
Okay.
Other than that, it just rolls over and we can just send it to the developer.
Okay.
Shall we maybe look and, you know?
Yeah, so I've got, I've got a few precautions, I've got a discussion to be.
Well, we don't make a decision, but.
Well, I think in the case, the case that Tracy brought up, we should just leave it, that may sound stupid today, but in five years, it.
The only thing I feel like maybe.
You don't have that many complaints.
Can we, can, can we change the, can we change it so that it actually goes back to the, the homeowner?
The person that sold, that.
Actually paid for it, that'd be the only thing at this point.
Usually the, usually the developer is the, in these instances, I would say ninety-five percent of the time, it is burst into three fourths, that's who it goes back to.
Oh, it is.
But it's usually just like your one loss, or, you know, like, there's always something, so.
Yeah, and that's what Jared was explaining, but, but we may not pay, we will pay him back, but he may have charged, the person that buys the home.
I can think of two instances where the, the original developer homeowner sold the home, and there was actually a proof addendum attached to that, saying, like, we paid this homeowner, and then when this additional three years is up, we get that money, so.
Yeah.
Usually it's rolled into there and, and they get, they get it back.
Puts us in a gervening situation.
Yeah, yeah.
To, for sure. Makes sense when we talk about it, but it should go out.
So if somebody says something, all we gotta do is say, go talk to Jared and see how his is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
Just say it could be worse.
Go to Davis County.
Could be worse, could be worse, exactly.
Well, I'm gonna say, you should see what Jared wants us to do.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I think at the end of the day, it really isn't that bad the way we got it, it, it's not perfect by any means, but.
Okay.
Thanks for the discussion.
Yeah.
Don't bring it up again.
It's dead.
Right now. Okay, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number three, discussion on additional city administration positions, such as an entry level planner.
So I had, I had received this document and, and read through this document, um, for that job description for the administrative planner. So I just want, I sent it to everybody just to review, my opinion is, it's really important, especially with the general plan coming up, that we have someone in that position. So I would like to get that position, I'd like to get this approved by everybody and get listed, so we can find someone.
We're, 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 we're.
We allocated money for the, for the.
Position.
The position, we've allocated money for everything to supply that position, so I, I just think it's a, I think it's a very important position.
Well, you know, I kinda wondered where the, where the pressure was coming from, because, uh, with what we're doing today, you know, by contracting out our, our inspectors. We're paying quite a bit less, uh, less than half of having someone that we actually employed for a full time.
For inspectors.
For inspectors.
For the building inspector, but that's.
So, if you, but if you add a building inspector, you'll have to contract out with, with what this describes as a planner, we, we don't have budget to do both. And there was some concerns that if, if we had someone that has a master's degree, can you really hire them for this, and would they really stay, or?
Yeah, I thought, I didn't know the salary, I didn't put the salary in there, I think the salary is low, but I, I've worked. Yeah, I thought, I didn't know the salary, I didn't put the salary in there, I think the salary is low, but I, I've worked my job for twenty-four years.
What did you call it, you called it administrative?
Administrative planner, like, like, like someone to. Make sure the, that the master plan's all followed, make sure that everything's been turned in, make sure that they follow. If they have to have a rezone, they can carry it through, they can make presentations to.
Who's probably handling those duties today?
Well, uh, let's do right back there. What I, what I look at kind of, you know, when you talked about this before, when you start coordinating, when you start coordinating things, I think, you know, if you really looked at what. It appears to me from now, uh, watched this for a few months, to coordinate all of these things. Is, is really a position that could almost be part-time. Someone that just, that they do come in and make sure everything's complete, when a developer gets a packet that has to be complete.
Was that what Mike was doing?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't what that position was doing, or they, they were doing that before Mike left, right? He was coordinating that whole process?
Uh, pretty, pretty much, yes.
Okay.
So, I, I just, my question is, have we not grown enough as a community, so that I don't, I'm not the guy that's, that's supposed to be. Describing architectural standards to a commercial developer, that's, that's describing, you know, um. You know, where it is we think that the best place in Hooper should be for, um, you know, some, you know, some moderate income housing and things. Somebody that actually is trained to do that, that are planning commission, they're great people, they're not trained to do that, they need, they need some guidance.
In response to that, Tracy, who would be trained, coming out of college, to say, where is that best in Hooper? I mean, cause we.
That's what I'm saying.
Actually, somebody has to learn something, I had learned something.
That's why, that's why we talked earlier about being kind of in-house. You know, if someone could be hired here, and I, I agree. But I think we ought to train them in-house, so that they're familiar with how Hooper City is, and that they're not using example of other cities that aren't, aren't like us.
And I agree with that, but we're not doing anything to find anybody.
That we know of.
I agree with, I agree, right, from my perspective, from our perspective, we've talked about it, but we've taken no action.
Well, we, we have, I, I interviewed a gal that I think she said, she said you sent her.
Okay.
Kiffin.
Yeah.
At seventy-five dollars an hour, and she works for other, she contracts with other cities, but that seemed like an awful lot of money. But, uh, you know, there's the thought that maybe we could, uh, find a planner that does, could plan, uh, and contract with them, that wouldn't be so much money, just like we do with the. Those that do the inspections, you know, they're planners for other cities, and whether they're contracted with another city, or they work for another city, we could, we could share them. You know, so.
Well, and I, so, I, when I look at our city staff, right, it, part of my concern with Hooper is, is I know we're limited on funds. But, like, right now, Mayor, we, we're fortunate to have you as a mayor, based on the time availability that you're able to give to the city. But the reality is that when we have a part-time governing body, as we do, and, and as we continue to move forward. Not every mayor that runs is going to have, uh, could be retired, or have the time and capacity that you've had. Um, they might have a full-time job, and they might work in that ten, fifteen, twenty hour, what they think commitment is, into that mix. Um, I, I look at Tracy, um, Tracy's done a great job, he's been with us for a long time, Tracy's not gonna be here forever, but he has this wealth of knowledge that we rely on, based on. What we've had him do for the last X, Y, Z years, that we utilize those skillsets and that knowledge, but if Tracy leaves tomorrow. Right, we have, we have very little resource, we have Jared, right? But we have very little resource on the engineering side, that, that understand the whole planning side, so we're using him as, as a resource for planning. We're using him for a resource for positions that maybe we need to be looking at ways to expand our staff, I have down here my note. Uh, when it comes to this whole process is, uh, as a council and as a, as a, what I'd say, management team for the city. Do we have, do we have enough people on the bus, first of all, and then do we have the right people in the right seats, or do we have a seat team in four that would sit in? I don't know, but I, I think that, I, I personally don't believe that one person should be deciding that, I believe that we should be deciding that. And so, I, in my discussions with other council people in the past, it's been, we just wanna be part of the plan. Because the reality is, i- in a year, I could be gone, and, and, and Chris could be gone, and, you know, a couple of years, in, in three years, you know, four years, you're gone, Mayor. Somebody's gotta be here to keep it going, and, and so our ideas are only as good as our terms are. And if we don't have staff in place that are long-term, that, that continue to push that along, doesn't do us any good. I, I spoke, I spoke with Mike Fisher, um, finally I got a chance to run to him, and, you know, quite frankly, as a citizen, and then some feedback, I asked him about. Kind of the planning side, and Chris and I talked to him a ton when, when he was hired on, because we were trying to talk about, who's the housing authority in Hooper City? Cause we, we don't know, well, the planning commission kind of is, but no, it's the city council, is, is, is typically the housing authority, based on. The elected rights of the, of the council. So when we're looking at this position, I think that the council has gotta be able to work with an individual, that instead of Tracy having to present every project that comes up. Mike did a great job, I'm not touting for Mike or whatever, but the position was nice to have, to bounce things off of when it talked, when we were talking about planning in the city. And I feel like there's a big gap, um, you know, I think most of us have been hit up by developers, that say the process is really monkey right now. Uh, I have, um.
Developer, go ahead.
Well, whether we like developers or not, those are people that work with our city, and so it's, it's, if it becomes cumbersome, it's horrible.
That, that's not to say we shouldn't be planning this, or, you know, work, and to say that I'm, we're just totally turning a deaf ear to it is not the case. It's just, I think it'll take the right person. How long's Mike been gone, just a few months?
Since May, June.
I think he, I think his last day said his work was like the tenth of June, or something like that, right, that he kinda. So it's not like we've just turned a deaf ear to it, but I, I don't, uh. My observation from what I saw before, I wouldn't want to go back just like we just came from. I wouldn't want it to be just like, because we.
Could you enlighten us on what was bad before?
Could I enlighten you?
Like, like, I, no, I'm just trying to have an understanding of, like, like Mike was here, that when that position existed, what was the positive and what was the negative, because.
Okay, I, I would say he, he maybe felt, well, that's not to say Mike, Mike, maybe any planner would.
Now, you talk about the position, gentlemen, we don't have to talk about Mike, but the position of how it's structured.
Okay, what, what I would, uh, what I, what I would see, to make sure that the planner is working for, he's working for who, who pays him to do that, or her. You know, and not that they would feel pressure from developers to say, well, sure, you, we've been told we need to do this, but. But that's pretty expensive for us to do, so isn't there another way to do this? And we, I think we could actually cite new examples of where we ran into, it was somewhat of a, a roadblock where. What had been planned and approved was changed, and we didn't bring those, uh, plans back to the planning commission to. In fact, we're kind of in the middle of some of this right now, bring it back to the planning commission and say, look, this plan has now changed. Uh, we didn't ever do that, they just wanted to, to, uh, to continue with the plan, as though there were no changes, but in fact, there were changes. And if we have a planner that says, well, you know, that if they feel more pressure from that side than they do working for the city. Then they end up signing an agreement, maybe they sign an agreement that they can move into their home, and everybody else has been required to put in a sidewalk, but they haven't been.
So that makes sense for replacement, but tell me why the position was bad? I get, if that's, if that's the, the reason why the position, or the individual in the position didn't work, cause he was circumventing the system and the rules of the city, right?
They, they could, I mean, it, what it takes is just a team, it takes a team effort from public works, from our city engineer. From the council, from the commission, where everybody's just working together, and that's not to say that they would have different ideas at, at times. But when it all comes, uh, when it all comes at an end, or like they say, at the end of the day, everybody's gotta be on board. They, they really need to, to do that, or you have things happening that, uh.
So I totally agree as a team.
Okay.
My question is, we have a team, right? So we have a, a city recorder, we have a, a engineer, I'm trying, we have all, all these.
I'm trying to engineer this.
Based on, based on what I heard, Mayor, I'm, I'm not trying to be paying my own, I'm paying a little bit, but based on what I heard. Any one of these individuals can go off course and not follow policy, and, and make some runaround that causes the same exact thing by this position. I don't, I don't think the argument is that these people can't go off course, I think, my question is, why is this position not valid?
Well, I'm not saying it's not valid, I'm.
Well, we just talked about hiring subcontractors to do it, so I think there's a feeling it's not valid.
Well, I, I just clicked at this job description.
Well, that was just.
This is a sample.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't work on the pitch scene, if the city has a job description, I'd love to see it, I have a secret.
Well, we've never had, we've never had one before.
So this is a starting point.
Well, well.
So there we go, so it's a start.
We just, we just made a budget, that we created a budget for the planning and development department.
We approved that.
We had a guy in that position just six months ago.
So you had to have a job description, did Mike not have a job description?
You tell me, I wasn't hearing, but he did.
I don't know, without, without the commit, so.
He, he did not have a job description.
So quite frankly, not to throw people under the bus, but it was talked about at the city council meeting, and Mike was hired without us even knowing.
We didn't even know.
It was frustrating in point as well for the council, that happened without our approval, without our knowledge, and all of a sudden he was there, so we, we don't know, but we're not gonna let it happen again.
So, so I have a question for the, the city attorney. So, as far as our form of government, is that, is that the city councils?
Well, the, the system is that, that the mayor would recommend a person, and then the group of you consent to it. And I, he shouldn't have been hired without the knowledge of the council.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was very frustrating at the time, because we talked about a role, we'd actually talked about a city administrator was the role we talked about. And then, it was like, oh, by the way, we hired Mike Fisher back, is he doing this, and we all went, oh.
A- and that was before.
Yeah, I'm not, but I'm just saying, but it was like, it was kinda like this, and I.
It's your fault now, Dale, cause you inherited it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's okay.
But moving back to this position, I mean, so if we don't have a job description, which we didn't, it sounds like, then, then. What did we set money aside for, when we did our budgetary design, because I felt like as, some of the board on our budget, I was voting for a position that existed. And was defined, and it sounds like it wasn't, so then clearly we have now funding set aside, based on this group, for a role that doesn't exist on paper anywhere. So then what do we do to rectify that, so that it either exists, or we as a council say that money doesn't exist, and we'll put the money somewhere else?
And not only that, but I think we're getting big enough as a city, and we're going to get bigger as a city. We're contracted to death right now, we contract Tracy's services, thank goodness we have him, we contract a building inspector now, we co- we're talking about contracting the planning position. I mean, for heaven's sakes, let's roll all this contracting stuff into one position, if possible, at least start one. And work towards an end goal and do away with all the contracting.
Okay, so, you're, what, how did, to sum up what you said, at least at the end, I couldn't agree with more. You hire someone, and, you know, my, it, it appeared to me that a starting point would be a, a building inspector, and someone who, who knew the ordinances. So if, if Shawna gets a call, and they wanna know if they can do a certain thing, there's someone we can turn to and say, yeah, they, they know what the ordinances are. Uh, building inspection, eh, if, that's a certification, it's not like they have to be.
Right.
Learning the ordinances is something that, and, you know, you, you can learn, you can learn in-house, and so. And then the third part, which I talked about, was this coordination, this coordinating part, where we're not like other cities, we, we don't have everything under this roof. We don't have secondary water, we don't have culinary water, we don't have the fire district, we don't, well, who you see on this roof is who you're looking at, with the exceptions of, uh, Mr. Bruce Taylor. You know, back in the back, but everybody else is just kind of in-house here, and, uh.
I didn't know who Bruce Taylor was.
Okay. So.
We've only got one.
This is the worst thing where you.
Tell the kid, Bruce Taylor.
I thought he was.
But my point in all that, it's, and, uh, you know, speaking of Mr. Taylor, you know, he's, was one here, because, uh, water district wanted to put a well in his neighborhood.
Water tower, yeah, water tower, actually has a neighborhood.
But my point in saying that, we are, we are not the same as others, we're, we're, or even our location, I, whenever I talk to other mayors, it's always, you know. No one else has the Great Salt Lake as their border, there's not another city in the state that even has an island as part of their city. We, we have things that are really unique, but that ought to be a real plus, something that we capitalize on. You know, that we, we can use to, to benefits, to be, to take pride in. So that's to say, um, I have here a paper that was written up, and I think Tracy, you may have offered this about, you know, getting someone hired to assist public works. And a development coordinator, you gave this a long time ago, because I was concerned about this position. You know, how do, how do we fill a position that will really complement our public works, our engineer, they complement the council, the planning commission? And he wrote up, you know, it's just critical to maintain an organized process, keep records up to date, ease the burden on the existing city staff. All of this, that, all, if you, I'll make copies of this for all of you, because it just goes down what this development coordinator would do.
So can we write up a job description from many, from that?
Sure, I, I think so, and, you know, right off, right out of the gate, if you were to look at this, it really could be like a part-time job, I don't. I don't know it would take someone a full-time job, you know, to do what would ease, uh, the burden that others are feeling.
I don't think you're gonna get a qualified person to work part-time, though, in a place like this.
Well, that would be probably in addition to, uh, something else.
I, I, my experience in this is that a part-time individual or a contracted individual gives you the attention that you deserve, which is.
Half.
But not all of you.
Well, I think.
I think when you're all in, you're all out.
This is giving me a headache, this, this, I think that what we wanna do, is eventually, we're, it's like kicking a dirt cloud down the road, eventually we're gonna catch up to it. I mean, we're gonna need, we're gonna need a person in this position.
There, there's no question.
I, I think the council, and, I mean, I'll speak freely for the council, and that is, I think we would like to start down this road. Maybe, maybe we don't have enough money in the budget for this person.
But we just approved a budget.
I know, but what I'm saying, maybe that's not enough to actually get somebody qualified, we don't know that.
Right.
Until we start this process of actually looking for a person, and I think that eventually, I mean, we're just looking down the road a little bit, and eventually, we're gonna have to hire this person. He or she to do this kind of job that we're already contracting out, and so, I mean, whether we're saving a lot of money or not, that's gonna actually come to an end at some point, and then we're gonna be stuck. And because we have a lot of people doing a lot of things on the contract, and that's what I would think is, we wanna kind of start going down this road. It's not about us saving half the money, that's all great, we've got money set aside, but maybe that money that we've got set aside is not enough to hire a qualified person. Well, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know anything about that.
When I, when I read, when I read this, I, I, I read through it, then I called over to Valerie at Clinton City, she's their community development director. Been assistant city manager places, been planners places, I said, I said, let me read this range, and I said, and, and I said, we're talking zero to three years. And she said, oh, so okay, zero to three years, you know, forty to forty-five thousand, depending on the, the zero to three years. And she said, that, that's what we'd hire for Clinton, whether for any entry level or, or zero to three year planner. If, if, if I were hired, and she said, so I said, okay, well, maybe that, maybe that range fits in terms of what's written there, I don't know what your budget says. I just wanna, I just wanna add one of the things, okay, when, when, when I, when I was hired by Dirk Bailey to be the contract city engineer. I knew how to design roads, I knew how to design structures, I knew how to design sewers, storm grain, I knew nothing about ordinances, I knew nothing about the general plans, I knew none of that. Okay, I wrote the first general plan from a copy from some other place that I found, I wrote most of it. The ordinances we, we stole from Ada County, Idaho, and then I helped, I helped the planning. And then I helped, I helped the planning commission edit it to get something with, you know, with re, or, I don't know, I remember. Were you, were you?
We spent a lot of time on that.
Exactly, I'm not, not like, not like I did it by myself, but I, I mean, I didn't know anything about that. And, and I, I just, as I listen, I just feel like, gosh, isn't it time to get somebody who will grow with this, like, like I have? Because, uh, you know, I, I'm gonna retire, you know, sooner than later. And I, I hope that, I hope that at that time, you'll, you'll go to the effort to find another contract city engineer. And maybe, maybe you'd be somebody in my firm that would be able to step up and help you, but it's still not, it's still gonna be engineers. You know, and Chris, Chris can tell you, there's a difference.
There is a big difference.
Our staff is so, our resources are so tight, I mean, we, we have a lot of people wearing a lot of hats. My concern is we continue to move forward is, if we don't add this infrastructure and as people leave, we leave some huge gaping holes with jobs that are very high-bred.
Critical jobs.
So, so the sewer managers is an example. So we can't fill a position because it's a very detailed role, right? So we, that's another position that exists, we're, we have money aside for it, but because of the skill set required to do that, we can't really fill it. And so when I look at this planner role, or I look at all these different roles that, that, you know, Jared's doing more than public works, he's, he's got his hands on these things. What does that look like for our staff five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now? And as people leave, what kind of gaping holes do we have to try to backfill those roles? I don't know, but I think we definitely need to, to get plans in place to do that.
Well, I think, I think we're talking about that, I don't, I don't think we have. I, I, it sounds like we are moving towards that, and this discussion proves that. I think it's a process. To have someone in place for the general plan, I don't think that's necessary. We've already got a contract, I don't know if you'd call it a contract, with the grant, with the WFRC. Obviously, they're gonna have professional planners that will be available to us. So, I think it's, I think it's a process, I think we need to take our time. Yeah, we need to move forward on it, but I, I don't think we're gonna have big holes if, if we move forward on this and, you know, keep going.
Don't you think though that our planner, that, that, I guess, the benefit of a planner and people will probably be involved in that process? Is that somebody should go back and say, twenty years ago, this is why we did this? As opposed to somebody coming in after the fact and saying, here's the plan, follow it? Is, they actually have buy-in and they actually have commitment into what's going on?
Well, the intent behind this wasn't, it, the intent behind this was, on our website, there's a button that says jobs or employment, and it's empty. The intent behind this was you post the job and you start getting resumes, so we have something to review, that is a whole intent. So if they clicked on there and it said, entry level planner position available, this is the range, it doesn't need to have this, but then we can start getting resumes. That was, that was my intent behind it.
So we need to get, and I, and I agree with you, what, what we don't have is one of, an example of one of these, or we haven't put together a job description to post on there yet.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily think you need a job description, I think you can put on there, entry level position available in our city for an entry level planner.
Why don't we put entry level city coordinator?
Whatever, whatever you wanna call it.
We can put planner slash coordinator, but then we can start getting resumes in, and then we can see what the market has.
But you've gotta list qualifications, because.
We've, we've gotta have a planner.
You're gonna get a high school graduate applying for it.
But I'm saying, you don't need, like, you don't need a multi-page thing, you can list what's required.
Right.
That's, this was a lot of stuff.
Well, and I'd like to, you know, I, this ties in with the last item, number four, as I, with our general plan, and I, I really think it's relevant to tie the two together. But I'd like to just read you a list of the subdivisions that have been put in, they're either finally approved or in the process, or as of this last round, the, the commission actually tabled one for fifty-four acres, because they just feel like we're moving too fast. Now, I don't expect you to write all these down, but you'll be surprised. The reason I'm telling you this is that, as we move through, as we move towards getting this, uh, uh, opening this general plan, it would be good to be able to, to put things on hold, or at least be, because of the general plan, until we can kind of find out where we are. We, I'll, I'll read you a list of these and you'll, you'll understand why I feel.
I got things I gotta get done before.
Thanks, thank you, but I, I think you'll understand, uh, maybe it will help to, to see why, if, if we don't some way, there's a lot of pressure for Hooper, and I could, I, I could read you a whole list of reasons why all the cities now are at fault that we, they can't build enough homes for forty-one thousand people that are looking for it. But it's, it's no one's fault, but Hooper Cities, whether it's Marriott Sladeville, it's everybody's fault because of, it's too expensive to build, but they want us to correct that. But if I read through this list, HL Parker Farms, we approved an eight-lot subdivision, they've, they tabled a fifty-four acre large ground. Hadley Valley, approved. Wooderson subdivision, it's in preliminary, but is approaching a, a final approval. Ross and Ranch, approaching final approval. RFR subdivision, approved. Turner Legacy, approved. Quell Cove, approved. Quell Estates, approved. Greens Landing, they're, they've got some problems they're trying to work out there to, to approach. This is one of those situations where they wanted a new owner, a new developer wants to leave off right where the prior developer, prior, to the plans that he had, but the plans have changed, they're not the same plans.
And the times expired too.
And the times expired. Morning Meadows, we've got that one sitting out here, and they're trying to sell it, but the, the buyer now wants to change some of the plans that Morning Meadows has. And they've also purchased the ground, or have a, they don't purchase the ground, they have a right to purchase it, the ground to the west of it, so they don't, they want to do away with part of the infrastructure that was designed so that they can tie it in to this other subdivision. Silver Saddles, that's also in, they're wanting to sell that. And Nielsen Homes is looking at that, they also want to change the plans, which we feel like ought to come back through the planning commission again, because it's not the same plan the planning commission approved.
Absolutely.
Hall's Crossing, Country View, Westview, the Roppelito subdivision, the Pressnell subdivision. Torgaylees, that's in the, works for a hundred and eighty-five homes. Pad Acres, that's final, in fact, there's, uh, a couple homes built on that now. Anita Acres, Wildwood Circle, Second Estates, Brooks Estates, Patriot Acres. That is, that is a lot of subdivisions in the last, uh, year and a half, that, that, and in, in all of this, in all of these subdivisions, there was never a plan for a park. There's never a plan for a walking trail. There's never, uh, impact fees have never been reviewed to see, well, if we're bringing that many more families into Hooper, how, how will they impact us, where do, how do we build parks for these kids? Or adults, if they're pickleball, you know, pickleball courts. My, my point is, is that we will, we will never catch up if we just keep approving hundreds and hundreds, which this adds up to, of homes, where we've never looked at the impact statements, we've never looked at the impacts on the road, we haven't ever done a, a highway, a road study, according to Tracy, we've never paid to have that done. So he's filed for a grant, it's a six, uh, fifty-six thousand, fifty-four thousand dollar grant, but the city has to come up with six thousand dollars of it, to do a study on the roads. These, these homes are impacting our city, and right today, there is, there is no benefit. As I look at this, there, there is no benefit to Hooper City, except we get good neighbors. You know, we get some good neighbors, but as far as helping us, uh, there's nothing that helps the impact that they cause. So, you know, I, as I look at this, I think, you know, at some point, we have just got to let the dust settle, work through this general plan, and in the process of doing that, we can be looking for someone who will fit the bill as this coordinator, this planning coordinator, so that by the time we're done with the general plan, we can be ahead of the game. Where, if a, if a developer wants to develop in Hooper, he already knows the game plan that the council and commission, there's a general plan that will actually describe that to him. Today, we, there could have been one in place, I mean, I know there was a general plan in place. Ryan, you, Cindy, and myself, we all were really involved in that, but, but we haven't really seen that surface yet. We haven't really, really, the main thing that that general plan, and I, I was always real pleased with it, but really, what kinda drove that is could the sewer really provide a service? And now, uh, you know, we kinda find out that, yeah, uh, the service that can be provided by the sewer, I mean, the infrastructure's kind of there. But that doesn't mean we wouldn't have to upgrade a, a vacuum pump for a little upgraded scale, or maybe put two pumps in one plate, you know, we may have to upgrade some things. That has never, since the sewer's been put in, we have never stepped back and say, do we have the capacity right today, the way it sits, the way it sets, to take care of all of this that's going on?
Yep, and we ask that question every time there's a subdivision, do we have a sewer capacity? And we're always told yes.
Yeah, yeah, we've got.
Plenty of capacity, plenty of capacity.
There is capacity, uh, all the, if you looked at it like, is all the infrastructure in the building?
The sewer.
Is all the infrastructure in there? But what we, we did, uh, we have ran into a little situation that kinda surfaced out at the end of Fifty Five Hundred West. A house that builds out, you know, lives out in the street on the west side of Fifty Five Hundred West. It's out in the field a little ways. Vacuum system weren't good until all the homes have got, come, you know, they've all been put in there.
Nielsen Homes.
Quell Meadows, phase one, Quell Meadows, phase two.
Yeah.
Quell Estates.
Russell, Russell.
Yeah.
So, so if they go and test the vacuum, the vacuums there, I mean, it's not like there's not enough vacuum, it's just that they have to go out every few days and open it, they've, uh, put kind of a makeshift valve in and open a valve and let air suck into that line, so the vacuum sucks everything down to the main line, and, and that's the correction today, unless we, unless the city comes up with something that's an automatic kind of thing, that this valve will just open by itself every so often. That's maybe kind of a simple example, but I think there, I think we're getting to the point where there may be a lot of simple problems out there that, that we're not really getting addressed. And we, we never will catch up if we keep, if we keep expanding, you know, keep developing as fast as we are, we will never, we'll never catch up.
But, uh, I said, I have a question.
Okay.
I don't think the planning commission can table a subdivision because they don't want it.
No, no.
Not because they don't want it.
I mean, you can't, I mean, you can't stop developing, you can't stop reviewing projects because we're waiting for the general plan, you can't do that, is that, am I wrong?
Reed, what's it, what is it? Well, postpone, I, table, is, is table killing, or is?
Table is saying, we need to do something before we.
Well, postpone indefinitely?
Oh, not indefinitely.
You, you can't, and Rob said they can't, you have to set a date when you table something, you have to.
We can't just say we'll table forever, no.
Right.
But you, but you can't, just, you can't say we're not gonna sub, approve subdivisions till we go through the general plan, you can't do that.
Why not?
But I don't think it's legal.
So you wanna put more toward all the lean, is that the plan?
I don't think you wanna do that, but you, could you do that possibly? I would've done, uh, when they did the general plan ten years ago.
How about, uh, even Davis County?
Yeah, they put them down. I don't know that you wanna do that.
I don't know that we do either, but.
But you could, you could certainly slow things down somewhat.
But why did the planning commission table that?
Why did they?
Yeah.
For the, because of the general plan, they have.
But if they meet the ordinance, but if they meet the ordinance, the current.
No, the general plan is not open.
It's not open.
It's not open.
It's not open.
We're, we're starting.
I believe.
We've, we've started committees.
The general plan.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking because.
Okay, so let, let me ask you, the people that already live here and those that will live here, do they have any rights? Do you have rights, does Ryan have rights?
You own property here, Eric?
I own property, but, okay, but we have, we have rights, but here's what I'm saying, is that sometimes we, we feel pressure from someone who will, will never live here, and a lot of them haven't really bought the property yet. They don't own the property, it's, in fact, I would bet, I only really know of one, I only know of one piece of ground where the developer actually owns the ground, he has a right to develop, he's got a contract to buy it. But it's usually based on some decisions the city makes, uh, can we get final approval?
Well, they're not gonna invest in it if they can't develop it.
So, okay, so they really.
They have the same priorities.
So they really, at this point, have nothing invested until they can develop it, where everybody that's already out here, or that will live out here, will have things invested. We do have things invested in it. And to, and to think that now, this, uh, you know, that we could be, all, all I'm saying is, is why can't we just as a, and I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna send out to see how the citizens feel about this. How does Hooper City feel about, uh, growing as fast as what?
Well, we've already heard what citizens think, they all wanna slam the door every time they move in.
Then they move in.
Slam the door.
Then they move in.
But if we get them in, okay, so we need to help.
They can't do that.
We, we need to help as a, as a council, as the commission, if we're not slamming the door, we're just saying, we need, we need plans. That's what you're talking about, we need plans that will actually.
I know you're really wary of the slam the door theory, and, and I know you weren't here there when I had the discussion, but the slam the door theory for me says, and, and I'm a transplant, so you guys could slam the door a long time ago. But my family's transplanted Hooper, and if I use the slam the door theory, the minute we moved out here, I'm, no one's here, you two are here, and no one's here.
But I don't, I don't, we're not talking about that, I don't know that anybody agrees with.
The first thing that I heard, but.
Of course you can't slam the door.
What I hear.
Yeah, but they just tabled the subdivision. Because they wanna wait.
They wanna wait until.
November, they, they put a date on there, so the next meeting in November, till November. But, okay, but what, what good does it do? Let me ask you, who, who are you doing a favor if you go ahead and keep approving this? And you can't, when it comes right down to it, the road won't carry the amount of traffic. Maybe the sewer won't work, maybe the storm drain won't work.
But isn't that why we give builders letters?
We have experts that tell us those things.
They have to get it all approved before we build, that's.
Isn't that.
Okay, okay, now let's just back up what you're saying, so with what you're talking about, as soon as that's said, and I wish Jared and Tracy were still here, as soon as they tell a, a subdivider that, you know, this isn't what we approved, I know it's a lot cheaper for you to just kinda put a little detention pond behind every house, rather than have a drain that takes it out to a storm drain, as soon as they start telling them that, all of a sudden, now they're on the hot seat. Hooper City's holding this up.
Who are they on the hot seat to?
Who is that for?
If they're following our ordinances, who are they on the hot seat to?
They're not following it.
Who's not?
The developers, we, we've got.
No, 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 you said Jared, Tracy.
When they review a request.
Right.
That comes in where there's things that are changed, as soon as they write a comments back to them and say, this isn't what, this was not, this isn't what's approved, they start getting a lot of pushback, like, why, why isn't it approved?
Well, then tell them we should come back to the commission and the council.
But isn't that a different, that's a different.
Okay, but we've never done.
But why aren't we?
We've never, but it should.
Why aren't we doing?
This is a simple thing, this is a simple thing. This is like, this is like, if, I used to tell my kids to wake them up in the morning, I put an alarm clock in there, right? And when the alarm clock is nine, you get out of bed.
Who's making the decision not to do that, is my question.
It means you're out of bed, like.
Who's, who's making the decision?
But no, no, what if, what if you don't get out of bed? I mean, you can kinda, you can get out of bed the next morning, nine o'clock.
You're telling me that our staff can't follow the ordinances given because of the work stack?
No, no, it might, maybe I'm not making myself clear, our staff, they are following, when they get a set of plans in.
And people get frustrated.
Sometimes it'll be, and, and there's no question, if we had, if we took you back here and seen the number of sets of plans that come in from, uh, from a subdivision, sometimes you wonder, why does this take? Just like when, when we met with, uh, Greens Landings, why did it take nine sets of plans? It's because they sent in a set of plan, the first ones maybe had, and I'll just use this for an example, this isn't actual numbers, but maybe there's ten things, as Tracy and Jared went over it.
To change, yeah.
That need to be changed. They bring in another set of plans, well, now there's two out of the ten that are corrected. Bring in another set of plans, now we've got five out of the ten that's corrected. And there was a time when the planning commission used to kinda move these forward with conditions. Well, we've got one through five that are corrected, but five through ten. one through five that are corrected, but five through ten, we'll say, go ahead and do it based, based on you correct these.
Well, just second, we, what we have never approved anything.
The council's never done that.
We, we've never approved anything that had stuff like, you're hanging there that we didn't, that wasn't taken care of.
Well, okay, so.
Or in the same, in the same with, I'll say with, you know, we've never approved anything, we've always said, is, is the sewer system in the handle that? Every time they said yes, not one time have we approved anything that was.
You're, you're heading in another direction, I'm not taking it in.
Well, you're the one that opened the door.
No, all I'm saying is that when these were set with conditions, then as it moves to the, uh, council, if you didn't approve them, then all of a sudden, the city gets pushed back saying, yeah, the city's holding this up.
Well, who cares?
Tell them to come back to us.
Who cares?
We're the bad guys.
Exactly, we're the.
We'll be the bad guys.
Call them by number eight oh one six six four, six six four.
But, but we made a policy, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, that it doesn't come before us with the conditions, is that correct?
So.
So they're, they can't come before this body with conditions?
It goes to the commission.
No, that's, no, we can, what?
Yeah.
You, you served on the.
No, no, I'm saying it can't come here.
Can't come to the city council.
Cause we've only had a policy, they don't come here with conditions.
They can recommend approval with these conditions.
Perfect example is escrow or not, or a land separation fence or not. But they, there's been conditions with those two things several times.
Yeah.
So we, we have worked really hard to ensure that like, the, the first initial memo that Tracy puts out, that the key items are addressed before it comes to the planning commission for review, and the only items that are maybe left on that memo are items that we need, um, commission and council guidance and approval for, cause those are decisions that we make as staff, those are decisions that are made by the body as a whole. Uh, so those things do come to you for those things, but we, we've really worked hard to streamline the process to make sure that the other little things that were, like a will serve letter for water, or you know, things like that, that those no longer are coming to the planning commission and being skirted and tabled off to something else. Uh, but I will say, there are times where things are approved by, like developers, we make it very, very clear that these are the regulations and these are what our ordinance states, and they'll bring in multiple sets, multiple times, um, changing different things all over the place, so to bring it back to just this entry level planner, I think it's something that needs a lot of discussion, and I don't know that maybe entry level maybe would be the best thing. They're very, very detailed and sometimes, a lot of times with entry levels, they get their zero to three years and then they move somewhere else.
Right.
Um, but you're gonna want somebody who wants to stay, who wants to learn all these things, and is willing to take the time to do that, cause a lot of times subdivisions go almost three years, um, before the final escrow is released, before the warranty is up, you know, all those things, so you don't want them changing anything like that every three years and everything's kind of all over the place.
So maybe what you ought to do is let, is let the mayor work on, on the description, I don't know who wrote the description initially.
I did read it to me.
So let him work on the description and put in the things that he thinks should be there, it sounds like Tracy has some input of things that he should, thinks should be there. Uh, I think somebody can slurp the budget and see what he can afford to pay.
Right.
And, and then you can start analyzing based on what you think you can pay. No, that seems to be nice.
Cause it's my salary.
It's about seventy-five or something.
I mean, I agree with that, I think that's a great plan.
Absolutely.
And again, the intent of me sending that, it was emailed to me, the intent of me forwarding that to you guys was just so that we could get the job on our website, so we can get our resume, that's my only intent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, silly does it, I know we're working on it, but.
We need to start working on it.
But, but it's, it's gotta be done, yeah, how can we expedite this, I, I hear that, I hear that so often. Uh, how can we expedite this? Well, let's just get it right, we're, you know, we're not, uh, we've gotta get this right. And when you use the example of the alarm clock and that, you know, I think, I think those are great things to compare to, but once we, once we, we build it, once we build these subdivisions, it is, it is a, a direction of no return, you just can't, because then it does fall back, you take two years down the road and it falls back.
So, so back to what you were talking about then.
Okay.
Where's the concern? You got, you're saying you've got people changing plans and.
And getting pressure.
Like agreements being made and pressure being put on people.
Who is that?
Where's the cracks at? Why, why is that failing? And why is it not coming back?
I don't think it is failing.
Why isn't it coming back to the commission for reapproval?
I'm telling you right now, I don't think we are failing at all in the city. There's, there's not one place that we're failing, you're the one that's maybe, the commi, the council's coming up with saying things aren't, I, I think we're getting the, the job done, however, I think it can be done better if we have someone that.
Planning commission just, just, right, pushed off a subdivision until November based on, they.
They, they tabled it.
Yeah, so they first off of discussion, they tabled it, we're not gonna talk about it till November. So, that being said.
No, I think we'll talk about it until November and then another decision.
If the reason of that wasn't what I thought I understood you saying, right, was that the reason for that was because we don't know as a city how this is going to affect our infrastructure, that we're worried about our roads, we're worried about our sewer, we're worried about these things. What concerns me is when do we pick and choose when we're worried? And if we're worried, I just heard that we're not worried, so I'm, I'm confused if we're worried or not worried.
When you say, when do we pick and choose, anyone that served on the planning commission and know how long our general plan's been in place, uh, it's been over five years, we usually look at that every five years, I say, we become a little worried, should be concerned about the direction a city's headed every five years.
When, when are we, so when are we opening the general plan?
Soon.
It's open.
Yeah.
It is open.
So the commission made a motion to open it.
Have they made a motion to open it?
It's officially open?
They have to make a motion to open the general plan.
I, I've just seen any documentation that says anything's.
Where we are is, we're following it, uh.
We're still, we're, it's not.
It's not open.
We're still, we're still.
We're thinking about it.
Not, we're, we're past thinking about it.
Well, if, if it's not open, then we're still thinking about it, that's what I'm telling you.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure of that. I'm not sure.
I don't think it's open.
You gave us a timeline.
I don't know what it means to be open and not open, I think the plan, the planning commission is, is that in their next meeting, which would be September, they'll come up with an outline of the things that need to be done on the general plan. Now, does that mean that it's open now because they're thinking about it, or it's not open until we actually set up the committees? I don't know. Uh, but they're in the process of developing the general.
But that's an official motion to open the general plan.
That's, 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 that's my misunderstanding, because yes, I've, I've met with people, I, we've talked about things, so, so yeah, I have, I guess I assume it was open, but really in steps.
Yeah, so as we, as we visit about this as a council, where is, where is the frustration? I mean, i- if there is, I mean, what do you feel that, that we're broken? I mean, I'd like to know if some of you feel that way, and if the people you represent, you know, the people that voted you in on the council, do they feel that we're, the city's broken? I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't feel that way at all, I think, I feel we're real progressive in making, making sure we, uh, keep clear who our responsibilities are for, you know, our constituents that voted us in here, and that we're, we're, we're moving along, uh, we're, the only, look, I, I threw up, my background is the only thing that really grows fast, the only thing that grows fast is a weed. Sometimes, you know, sometimes you just have to get things done right in order to get the, the type of result that the people who voted you in to serve, and me, we get the type of results that they, they wanted us to get when we're all, when it's all done. So, so I'm curious, where, where are you feeling the pressure, or, or are you as a council feeling the pressure that Hooper really isn't progressively moving forward in a, a way that the people that you represent want you to? Or, or they, they don't think I'm moving forward in the way that they would want me to? I mean, I don't, see, I don't know where this is coming from, cause I think we've got a good plan in place.
I don't know, I don't know how we got, so, it's a great question, but I don't.
So we have an agenda, right? We're talking about these items, but we're not talking about that.
I've never, yeah, I've never well called Hooper City not what they're supposed to.
What I did is.
Well, you did, you did though, you said.
What did I say?
Well.
It is concerning to me if we table a subdivision that meets the ordinances.
Which has nothing to do with Hooper City's.
If they're following the zoning, the general plan, and they followed the requirements to come before the planning commission for an approval, how can you deny that?
Because it, it's a request.
But they're following the ordinances.
It's not, it's not an automatic thing.
But if they have the zoning and they're following the ordinances, it kind of is.
It, no, it's still, they come there as a, they apply as a request. To have a.
Right, but if they're following the ordinances and, and what we've set for.
And we've let all these other people do the same thing.
So one week ago, you took it out of approval, but a week later you can't?
I don't, you know, I don't think it's quite like that.
Okay, okay, that statement has nothing, so we, so my beginning part, we talked about the park, right, that we need the plan, right? Because we don't want to put in pickleball courts and decide, okay, but we need a parking lot, so let's tear out the pickleball courts and put in a parking lot. You've been sitting here, my part was almost an hour, we need a plan. From here listening to this, and from what Tracy said and Dela said, Hooper needs a plan. And we're moving so fast that you keep approving, and I'll tell you specifically like me that these houses are going in, did anybody ever do a traffic impact study on our road to see if we can handle fifty to seventy-five more houses?
Every time we asked a question, they were told yes.
And, and, and I agree with that.
Tracy's done multiple traffic studies.
So.
Yeah, but then when he did the traffic study on my road, the road was closed at the end of the road.
No, and, and so then, so in that case, he has to be screwed up there, because our city engineer said it was okay.
Okay, but on our.
Who's contracted out?
Let's just say, on our watch, on our watch, let's not, let's not do that.
Well, you know, fifty five hundred was developed, we put in fifty, sixty homes up east and west of fifty five hundred last, and I brought that very question up, and then our engineering department, straight out said that road is fine, we've measured it, we've estimated the traffic flow, it's fine. Every time I, I've dealt with a large subdivision that's come before this council since I've been here, I've asked questions in regards to those type of things, and our staff has said it's fine, we're gonna rely on the experts that work for the staff to give us that feedback. If we're now saying that since leadership shifted, that that's not been right, and we, and our engineers don't know what the roads are gonna handle that, that's a, that's a question that we, we probably need to figure out real quick. Right? Like.
That's why.
The plan exists, like, we're not, I get, you're, you're a hundred percent right, Sharon, we need a plan.
Five years, yeah.
But they continually change.
Okay, that, that's where we're, we're trying to.
But they'll change right after we set the new plan, one year after we set the new plan, they're gonna change, and then.
Well, I, I'm not.
Four years later, when we address it, like, it's always gonna change.
So what do you anticipate the general plan morphing into or changing?
That will change any of this.
To prevent all of this from happening.
Yeah, you know what, I, I don't know, but.
What do you vote on?
If I didn't, wouldn't even need a general plan, we just continue on, but I, no, I think, I think people are going to.
Go back to any of the laws.
That they're gonna say, okay, here are some things that have concerned us over the last five years. Mainly, uh, maybe we haven't addressed the roads, I mean, you just brought up one, which we, you know, we.
Well, we're supposed to be developing that road, that's been part of our.
But anyway, so, I, again, oh, Cindy, go ahead, I know you were.
Well, I, I'm disappointed in, I was involved in the general plan when we did it before, we had, we had a plan for parks, we had a plan for trails, we had a plan, now all I see is half acre lots and half acre houses. I, I saw the plan for down the road for me, a hundred and how many houses, I don't know, you probably know Chris, because.
Hundred, a hundred and eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty, okay, hundred and eighty-five houses, it's a hundred and eighty-five squares, and it's gonna have a hundred and eighty-five, uh, vinyl fences, no parks, no trails, nothing, it's, the, 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 the footprint of it from the air is, is ugly.
You got a good point.
We're not implementing what we have now, so we need to stop and say, hey, we need to implement what we've got and improve on it, because the general plan was not just half acre lots, that's not all it is, but that's all developers are seeing is half acre lots. We're not making them do.
Pushing them to do as a city.
And you know what, shame on the planning commission and shame on the council for not pushing that.
But, but.
Well, no, every time, every time I brought it up, I would say, hey, a trail, a park, a, we don't have the money to maintain.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So that was a bad answer, so, so no, we do, we do need to have the general plan open, we need to have things, if we make a plan, we need to follow through on it.
So Cindy, though, the subdivision Greg Hawes did, that has the pathway going through it with that zoning, that zoning was removed from our ordinances. So the only, you.
I don't know where you're talking about.
Hooper Landings.
Hooper Landings, I'm sorry, it's Hooper Landings, so, and like Lakeview has the pathway going through it, with, those ordinance was, they were removed.
Well, but.
So they give something.
It was not an, it was not an ordinance, it was in the general plan.
It was a sum, it was a sum.
But, but to give something from a developer, we have to give something as a developer, so if you want, in, in my opinion, I, I don't like half acre square lots everywhere, but, but as a city, because of our plan, and I think we want actually, I think the mayor will go opposite direction, which is, you know, larger lots, I, I'm all about looking at, at properties and saying, you know what? Developer, if you concede X, Y, Z piece of land for city use, we'll concede some of the zoning requirements and, and allow you to have smaller lots or density lots based on the plan, no developer's going to put infrastructure in if, if the, the, the plan is, here's your square lots, this is what you can do, and we're gonna, we don't care what you, what you.
We, we pass those overlays.
Isn't that, isn't that part of the discussion we have to have when the general plan is open?
Well, it is.
This is what, this is, we may go a different direction and go that direction in certain areas.
See, I, I've been around since, since we went through that, these, these overlays we had.
And people bring that up all the time.
The past great.
And Hooper, Hooper Landings wa, is a prime example. So they had a certain number of acres, and if it was half acre lots, they could put this many homes on, but if that developer gave this much ground to the city and let them use it, then he would, he would still end up with the same number of.
He relax, that same number of lots?
Same number, what did we end up with?
A little tiny park.
A, a, a slough, I mean, that, that slough is not buildable acres, he, he did not give up a buildable acres so that he could get another buildable acres on a, another buildable acre to make up for that on a, on a third. The acreage they've given us is not buildable acres, it's just.
So is that.
Even the one up in miles.
The city by all accounts, yeah, that's fine there.
I, I think.
See, I think all of this, these are just things that.
I think we gotta define that.
I, I do too.
And follow through.
I'm getting a go for, but, but here's some of the problems, just so you know, I really appreciate everyone being here, I've now felt for two years that this type of discussion in a council meeting would be great, and we, we typically just run through agenda items, so this has been really cool. Um, because this is what we don't spend any time as a council doing, is talking about what's the plan, we spend a lot of time going, yep, yep.
Wow.
Uh, and so this has been awesome, because I think this discussion has to be had. Um, we had a, we had a developer that offered a bunch of property to the, uh, to the city, and it got shot down, which.
Where?
Oh, are, are you teasing me?
By the mayor's staff before they ever got to the council.
What, what property?
Flint's property.
Did you walk down there?
I've been there a long time.
You were covered every squ, it was not quality, it was, uh.
I've been, I've been, I've been down there for twenty years.
That's like getting a slough in exchange for.
No, but my point, my point is, is that.
I would've shot that too.
If the city council is the housing authority, which I believe it is, then when we make decisions on what the city will and won't talk about with developers donating property or not, it should definitely come before the body. It shouldn't be xed out by someone somewhere along the way, because we are, we do represent the city, the citizens that put us here, and if there's a chance, I, I know that property's garbage, but if that property had a fishing pond in it and had some banks put around it, I live in that property, by the way, you know, I live like a hundred, two hundred yards away, so it's like, it's not all garbage.
Further than that.
Yeah.
Further than two hundred yards.
But, but my point is, my backfield is, well, that's by the way, by the army, which New York, so I, I love that, but, um, that being said, it should've been the councils, our duty to discuss what that property for the benefit of the city or not, it shouldn't have gotten xed by the staff. There's stuff that comes in here, when we're talking about developing that, that gets rearranged, and, and I, I think that we as a council need to be more assertive, to be involved with things, but I also think the communication and the chain needs to make sure that it comes before the body.
I, I think you're good, and I, and I will say that you're a hundred, I agree a hundred and ten percent with you, as long as as long as you remember who you're representing, if you're not getting pressure from a developer to do that, if you are, I disagree with you.
I've had one developer talk to me and they'll come up on council.
I know, but I'm just saying, if, if, if there's pressure to do that, and, and yet the, the citizens. The citizens wouldn't really want a park out where they're talking about.
But how do we know if we don't have opportunity to discuss it?
Well, that's.
Well, and, and some of that I think is on us, if, if you wanna know, I mean, I ask about things around, come in, ask, I mean, you have to be. And you said it, you have to be a little assertive and find out what's going on.
So.
But again, and this all boils back to the original question, where's the pressure? Where, where's all the pressure coming from that we should expedite and move and build up Hooper just as fast as we can? Because that's really kind of the message that I, I, I'm hearing, that we just move, we don't take time to really put together a good general plan without continuing to, to develop all the time, we're trying to put together a plan to help that development. And I.
But that happens, that happens in a developer agreement meeting, I mean, but those are meetings that we don't even participate in, that happen right over here, that we, we don't even see.
Right, I wish, I wish we could turn back time.
I do too.
Ryan, about right over here, and all the, the planning commission went through to say, this, this is not, uh, right, right? I mean, that's, I guess there's no easier way to put it, it's not what we.
There's been a thousand things agreed to in that room that we know nothing about, same with the planning commission. Now, yes, it needs to change, that needs to get out in the open and say, let's put a trail on that subdivision, oh, you don't wanna do it, sorry, we don't, we're not gonna approve it. You know, I mean.
Whatever, whatever the stipulations are for our plan, my, my concern is that I feel like we have a plan. The plan has changed, apparently, the plan hasn't changed, the plan exists.
Well.
If, if, if our city staff say that plan no longer works, like, we can't do this, right? So if, if somebody comes and says, we don't have the sewer capacity to handle that subdivision based on our current plan, that's a reason for me, I think, we'd stop building right now.
That's a reason. That's a reason to deny it.
So.
That street won't handle that traffic flow, that's the schedule, how we do that, but it didn't.
Okay, so, so throwing that out there, throwing that out there, just like you said, where, where, how do we arrive at that point?
That's what those people that were back there know, that's what they tell us every time we approve something. Every time we approve something, Tracy and Jared submit to us that it will work or it won't work. All they have to do, straight up, if Tracy came to us and our engineering partners come to us and say, you know what? Forty-six hundred's not gonna be able to handle that traffic flow, the city's gonna have to look at, at changing that road and the infrastructure and how we're gonna pay for that, then the discussion goes. You know what, I don't think we can afford to allow that subdivision to go in right now because we don't have the, the dollars to do that. Developer, if you wanna put that subdivision in right there, we have to upgrade this street, you know, and how they grade the street's gonna cost us as much. You wanna pull me up with that, let's play, otherwise, yeah, we'll stop you, but you can't, you can't arbitrarily pick someone out of the mix because it's a big one and say, well, we're gonna stop now, because I guarantee in that planning commission, we just approved four other subdivisions, how can you pick and choose? Unless there's a, unless there's a, the, the concrete reason why that subdivision doesn't work, how do you pick and choose? And I, I have, I don't, I'm not, I don't own any property and I'm not a developer and I don't have any developer friends. So whenever that comes back, I feel like sometimes it comes back that, ooh, he's a developer, got a developer pushing him in his, in a developer's pocket. I couldn't care less about developers, I do care about landlords though, and I do care about landlords' rights. And a landlord, what we forget a lot about when we talk about developers are landlords that inherited money or, or property from their family that can't afford to pay the taxes on it by the farmer leasing it out to pay the rent. Some of us still farm our property and that makes fine sense, but right now, I think ninety percent of Hooper's farm by Stan Fowers and, uh, three other people.
And mostly Fowers.
Right, so, so that being said, and I pay the taxes off of leasing it, right, to, to grow corn and alfalfa. I, I watched that happen in my own neighborhood, a family lost three hundred and something acres based on some, some transitions of money and things, so. They had a right to sell that property though.
Okay.
I mean, they, they, they do.
But we have a right to control the development.
I agree, and that's why we put in ordinances, but once they meet the ordinance that we put in place, they should build a follow.
So do we not need a general plan? I, I'm just, you're kinda taking me two directions here where.
We gotta have a general plan, we have a general plan.
I think what he's saying is that if they meet the requirements of the current general plan.
Correct.
And there are no objections, you really can't turn a subdivision down.
Correct.
That's why they turned it down, we'd have, I'd have to.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I don't know.
That, that's just.
And maybe sewer issues, and maybe road issues, I don't know.
And it's, and it's.
That's a different story, that, that's a different story than we just wanna wait.
Yeah.
But what I, what I perceive from the mayor's presentation of that is, we gotta stop building until we come up with a new plan and, and that's great.
Well, you can, you, you can't stop building permanently, obviously.
Right.
You can slow things down while you finish your general plan if you're looking at doing that in the next six months.
How do you do that, though? Say no? General plan is a reason to stop building?
Can you do that, can we, can we put a stipulation on that?
Is that you could have a moratorium on building?
You don't have to do a moratorium for all building then.
You could put moratorium.
I think, I think the point that Chris is making is you can't be arbitrary about it, you can't say, okay, you can go ahead, but sorry, you can't, that's your.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I, I don't think we've done that, as a city.
But you, you don't think we will approve any more building for the next three months?
Develop, not.
Dev- developing, yeah, we won't approve, so Joe, Joe Close, citizen that lives here, that wants their sub to move next to them, that wants a subdivision of that two acre lot in the, in the two acre lots, we're going to tell them, you cannot do that, we won't approve any zoning changes.
Till next spring.
Until after the general plan, if, if that's the case, then the body should agree on that, but I, I don't think we're doing that, I think we're picking and choosing. You, you, you tell me, first of all, I don't think.
Okay, okay, let me tell you, we are not picking and choosing. Okay, I, that, you asked me the question, I don't believe the planning commission is picking and choosing by saying, we approve this one, we won't approve this one.
That's just not received at, I, I don't know.
No, no, but who, who've they, who've they ever done that with?
That was what I perceived from the presentation from here.
Yeah, that's what I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, maybe Chris is misunderstanding, but from what I, what I heard that you said was they tabled a subdivision because they wanna wait.
For a general plan.
For the general plan.
For the general plan.
But I don't believe they can legally do that.
Unless, like, when did you ever, I don't think.
Well, at what point, so you're saying, we, we have to continue, just like we've done.
Unless we decide we're gonna stop.
Unless we declare a moratorium.
A moratorium.
Unless we say, we wanna stop rezon, rezones until the general plan is done.
I'm everything.
Which I, I mean, we have a right to do, I think it's not the right, I wouldn't go for that, but we have a right to.
How, how do you, what do we do? I guess here's the, well, then what are you saying, what are you saying, I mean, because we've got, there'll be a lot of applications and someone's feeling a lot of pressure to really expedite, and that is always the word that comes up, how can we expedite?
Who's feeling that pressure?
Who's feeling the pressure?
I'm not saying, I'm not feeling, I'm not saying I'm feeling any pressure from anybody, I was not, I was totally fine when I sat down here tonight.
Why not at all?
Until you said the planning commission tabled subdivision because they wanna wait. And I, in my opinion, that isn't fair.
Well, well, I think there's.
That's something you.
I don't, I don't.
I think you need to talk to the planning commission or listen to the, listen to the meeting, because, yeah.
That, and that's why. And I, and I intend to. But I've not been told by anyone that I need to expedite the, the approval process at Hooper, I haven't been told that, and I didn't feel that way when I sat down here tonight.
None of us have.
No, I was.
I won't feel that way at all.
But it just, that, that comment concerned me, that we're, that we told someone, you're just gonna have to wait. Cause I don't believe you, I, maybe I'm wrong, I don't believe if someone has a piece of ground that's zoned R two, they meet the requirements to turn it in for preliminary approval, they've got all their Wilford letters and everything we've asked for, I don't believe you can deny that.
We've never done that. No, that, that, what you just described, no, this was a rezone, this was a rezone request, we've never done, we've never done what you just explained.
But you, but, but did they? Okay, okay.
So, so.
Then as far as I know.
Let, let me talk about why I would feel urgency in not.
So we did deny a rezone west of sixty-three hundred.
Because they didn't have sewer.
Because there's no sewer.
There's no sewer and we wouldn't reopen the general plan, which is a burden of my folks.
Right.
Right.
Even though it's no.
Let's, let's not talk about it.
Yeah, that's a different conversation.
Right, but there has to be a reason why they didn't grant the rezone.
So, but.
If it's on the general plan.
The intent.
Just to, just to clarify, uh, planning commission last week, there was a rezone for H L broker farms for fifty-two acres.
I think we're just trying to go around.
Yeah, we are.
We are.
So there was a public comment with about four specific questions about fire safety, road safety, sewer capacity, uh, and some, a myriad of other things. So planning commission did opt to table that till November, only a table, until they had an official meeting with the Wasatch Department Regional Council so they could fully understand, um, you know, what the general plan's going to entail, and then if, if this. Approving this rezone would lead to more issues that the public comment would address. So it was tabled just till November.
Okay, so it was tabled because they had questions?
They had questions that related, yeah, that related to the, yeah, related to the public comment, the public comments that were developed in
Well, that's different than a table that means we're still at that.
Uh, concerning fire safety, um, police safety, um, capacity, road safety, you know, all those types of things. So they started on their discussion about, we don't know what this is gonna happen, we don't know, you know, just all that kind of stuff.
Is that out of Sherbs, that's out of Sherbs district, is that across the Skidmore line?
No, no, right, in, in Bucksitt, so.
Those questions are also interesting to me.
And I'm just saying, it was just tabled until they had, they could further discuss everything that was, was brought up in the public.
That, that's different, so I apologize, I.
So, so.
Just what I, what I, what I heard was that.
I think you need to hear from the planning folks.
Yeah, that's what I would say too, listen to.
I, I, I think, I think slowing down growth, if you slow it down, doesn't make sense, I think slowing down growth, if it's affecting our infrastructure, it makes sense.
And then head goes.
Thank you.
But then you have to declare a moratorium.
They have to declare a moratorium until the general plan's opened up and finished.
Which is all built.
Well, unless we, but, but if we can't service that property, that's a different story, because we couldn't service sewer, so we can't rezone it.
I was just hearing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
But, but there's more than just sewer.
Right, but I, what I'm saying is.
Those are the, those are the properties.
Right, what I'm saying is, if they came to us and said, Hooper water can't service this property, Hooper irrigation can't service this property, we can't approve it.
Until they find another avenue to give water or, or service.
Right. We can't approve it because they, we can't service.
So Hooper City can't provide the road.
Right, if the road is substandard and they can't handle the traffic, we can't approve it.
I, I think, yeah, my, my concern, and it, it, we've spent a lot of time with you, that it, we just can't be arbitrary, it's gotta be, we, we follow.
Well, and I hope it wasn't just arbitrary, we just, there was just a point where the, you know, the general plan has been approved, not opened, but the committees have been put in place to start this, we've gotta start somewhere. But we would, uh, you know, whenever you start a plan, you hope that you're start, you have a starting point. There really is a, a time when you start without things being in a constant state of motion, where you never, you, you never, you never catch up.
So what's gonna be different three months from now?
So can we move on, are we into the general plan yet or?
That's a.
I thought I tied the two together, but.
I kinda thought we were discussing both.
Okay, well, that's kinda what I thought too, but. Got off on some things.
Nothing will change.
So in that process, so that kinda answers number three, two, I, I agree, there needs to, there needs to be someone on board that can fit the, fit what Hooper City needs.
So how, how are we gonna make that happen, let's, let's.
What's the action plan?
And what's the action plan on that?
Well.
Well, read.
Read out, mind it, and I think.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna put together a job description, right?
Job description.
And then we're gonna get it posted on our website so we can begin to give a presentation.
So is it fair, is it fair to say that, if we can, by next?
To, how can I expedite this?
Next council.
Let me see, that, that's it, why is there, I'm not, I'm not just going to just put this off and put it off and put it off.
But, next council.
But I'm also not going to just, uh, jump, 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 just to do something, just, just to satisfy someone because they want me to expedite.
So what if the council wants the city to put something together, I, I mean, we have the ability to ask for that, right, like.
Yeah.
I, I'm not talking about power tripping, but if we're asking if it's doable to come back in two weeks and present us a job description from the city, I don't expedite or not.
Kind of stop you there, put that kinda thing together.
Yeah. I, I would think a couple of weeks would be good.
So I mean, in a month, but you give us a.
Well, I think a month would be better, no, I think as, uh, okay, I'll just, just give you.
So a month, not more than a month, but in a month we'll have something, what?
A job description that could be reviewed and.
Yeah.
That, that would be step one, and we're not, we're not, we don't wanna expedite anything, by the way, I don't know why, where this word came up.
I, I problem.
And so, and so that's a, that's a great word, but everybody knows about city, city business is the wheels move really, really slow. So what we're asking is let's get the wheels moving, so let's come up with a description, let's get it posted. And then we don't say, we're not saying, let's get somebody hired this next month, let's see what kinda application, I agree, it's gotta be the right person.
Yeah, no.
I think the council says it's gotta be the right person.
I think you committed to that, didn't you?
You know, yeah, it's, it's gotta be the right person, we're agreeing on that, but we're saying, let's get, let's get.
So we'll, we'll look to see something come back from the city.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and, I'm off.
Okay, cool.
Go.
Well, I think that's everything.
See ya.
Unless there's something else you want to discuss.
Does Cindy have some comments?
Well, I just, the, the general plan, so that's, that's the last thing on your agenda, we're good there.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a timeline, and this, I believe, Shawna, is from the.
This is from.
This is from the WFRC.
Yeah, and this, this timeline is a little over, like, you can see, yeah, we haven't, we haven't sent that timeline yet either. Um, but we're looking through it and, um, and we're looking at some of those key things to, to really get that to the top.
So the general plan is a great opportunity for you to get information that you need to help the city plan in the future. So if you've got areas that you're concerned with, might be traffic, it might be, might be historical, uh, site development, like the trails. Uh, let's make sure there are committees that are part of this process that come back to you with some good firm recommendations. Uh, so, so make sure at least at the front, you get that input so the planning commission can have that ready to turn over to you. The process is, the planning commission does all of this, uh, through subcommittees and through their own main committee, and then they bring it to you. Uh, and you can modify it, you can change it, you can say we don't wanna do it, uh, but if product comes to you with the things that you want in it, you're much more likely to approve it than if it doesn't, so that's why you need to be somewhat involved in the front end, even though it's a, a planning commission obligation.
Thank you.
I'm glad you stayed, Reid, thanks.
I'm gonna go.
So thank you.
Thanks, Reid.
Thanks, Reid.
So I know there's an advisory committee, uh, in place, I'm not sure. I was asked to be on that, Ryan was asked to be on that, but to, and there's two planning commissioners, but to avoid the same thing, having to meet every time and have a quorum, that's why, um, I don't know if you've got any other citizens commit, commitments yet, I know they're going to try to get.
They're, they're, I can tell you who has accepted. Uh, Lisa Northrup, who's a business owner, you know Lisa, that's image down the corner. There's Mike Venable, who's in education, you know Mike?
Yeah.
Uh, Jamie Barnes, who works for the state of Utah and is with the Division of Forestry, Fire, Fire and State Lands. And she had a lot to do with, she has a lot to do with, uh, planning developments. Then we had Cindy. And Matt Malone, do you know Matt Malone, he has, he's an engineer by trade, but it just kinda, he's still in a.
Not sure.
He's just, he, he actually sent in some information, you know, his vision of Hooper. And it all, everyone says, you know, we, we understand Hooper will be growing, I mean, you, you can't stop it. But they, they all, without question say, but it's really, we're at a point here, we are at a crossroads, where we're gonna be planning for the next fifteen to twenty years. And how do we, we gotta make sure we do it right.
I agree.
So, so I think that's right, like, my two cents is that you get a better product than you have opposing views. You need to have what you want from what you need as views in some of that group, but that's just my two cents.
So, so the first step is to, um, well, you can read right here, so you think you need you on there? Uh, you want me to step down and you be on there?
No, 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 not from the council.
This is for, for the advisory committee.
For the advisory committee, I, I, I don't think it would hurt to have someone from Brad's neck of the woods or, I, I, I heard a lot of really traditional old timers, I don't know all the names, but I knew most of them, um, most of them live west of sixty-three hundred, like, or, or down in that area, so.
But that's, that's, that's gonna be on the table.
And, and.
Yeah.
And this is only the advisory committee, they don't really, they kinda, do you know better?
I have no clue, I, I just, when I heard the names, they're all good people, I, I, like, I mean, it doesn't matter what they are or not.
You can, I'll give you my two cents about East Hooper since that hasn't come up in this meeting. And that is that, what happened in East Hooper is not gonna happen again. So you could put, I could be on that advisory committee or whatever. This, we're not, they're not gonna, one, they're never gonna okay quarter acre lots, ever. They don't want half acre lots for crap's sakes.
Well, no, I, no.
So, I'm just saying, that's not gonna happen again, I don't know how that ever got approved.
Council.
I'm just saying, obviously, the council, it was.
Ryan could, back again, it was before.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, and I'm a person that feels like we need to protect Hooper the way it is. And I live on one of those, you know, I, I live in the dredges of society up there. And so, and so I live there, I live there, but I think that we need to protect Hooper the way it is, so putting somebody up there, I don't think that mix is gonna help anything, because that's never gonna get approved again. I don't, like I say, I don't know what the, the, the feeling of the council was when they actually approved that. And I mean, if those were, would have been three quarter acre lots, we would have bought one. It didn't matter, that's what was available at the time. I even know that East Hooper even, you know, even existed back then. So we can do, I can, we can do that, I can either be on or put somebody else on, but I don't think you're gonna get any ground by doing it.
No, I wasn't worried about the council, I'm just talking, this is a large.
No. Well, that's fine, we could do that, but that's, I don't, I just don't, that's a whole different, that's really kinda a whole different deal, East Hooper is.
And it's just, like she said, it's just a committee.
It's just, it's advisory, yeah.
It is, it is a committee, yeah, and that's fine, you know, have no problem having representation from there, but, I mean, I think, I think that.
How about this gentleman right there, do you consider yourself East Hooper? I know you're east of all the rest of us.
No, he does not.
You, one thing that's kinda surfaced, too, is a lot of people, even up in your area, still feel like they live in a rural community. I mean, you can take people that live in subdivisions, and they still feel like Hooper is a rural community. Now, I don't know if that fits your description, but it's still, it still is out there, and it's a, it's a strong feeling that we like Hooper the way, we like Hooper because it's a rural community, and why, and why is that? You know?
People are, are not unhappy.
They're not.
You know, and they live in that part of Hooper, I mean, they're not, I'm just saying, I don't believe that's the direction that Hooper's gonna go.
They're, they're not unhappy.
People aren't wanting half acre lots, trying to get bare lots to actually just slow down the growth, and so quarter acre lots aren't even in that conversation. And so that's the only thing I was saying about that. I mean, people love that, I mean, you know, we even hang out with Bruce once in a while, so it's all good. You know, he's on the fringe, he's one of those fringe guys, he owns the, he owns a whole corner, it's, you know, Taylor's Corner right there. So, I mean, but, and it's a mixture of people, I mean, it's a mixture of lots, but I don't think that's gonna help us actually.
Where is the committee? Where are they gonna get together?
That's, I, I know, that's Mary, she's kinda the chair, so, she will, let's know, but, I mean.
Do you want all the assignments, would that help, too?
As you can see, Shawna's a part of the management team, I have every confidence in Shawna, and that, you know, we will get good direction, and the WFRC members are listed there, so.
Yeah, for sure.
And where are they from?
Uh, Wasatch Front Regional Council, those are, those are employees, they're employees.
Salt Lake people?
Uh, one of them lives right up here in West Haven, um.
They're kinda scattered all over the place.
Yeah.
But, but that's why it's really, you know, critically important when you say, are they from Salt Lake, or, you know, even though they might be other places, we want it to be crystal clear that they're planning Hooper City.
Right.
Right.
That's why I asked.
I agree.
Cause a lot of these trainings we go to, they're, they're never from Utah, who, I've never even lived lower than a fourth story.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, but anyway, but as far as assignments on the planning commission, I don't know if you want to review those, or if it's getting late, or, but, all that's been, you know, we have, we have started things rolling. So.
Just let me bring up one other thing, so I think we need to get a survey out, and I'm sure, um, a, some type of a questionnaire, is that, where, where's that in the process?
Review this, Shawna, this'll be good information, she does.
Yeah, so I spoke with Megan at Wasatch Front Regional Council, and so she said, yeah, so, I mean, if you, I kinda, you was, like, there's multiple times where we have, like, outreach round one, outreach round two, and, I mean, COVID has thrown a wrench in, like, what we would traditionally do, so there will probably be some decision on how we want, how we, we might try to get a survey out in this way and see the response we get back, but if we're not getting that feedback back, we'll, we'll try a different way, you know, um, but, so she, she felt like, um, definitely a survey, but she thought it'd be better if we could finalize the committee first, um, and then she could have, like, a draft survey ready for the kickoff, uh, meeting, uh, that she had, and that way the committee adds a lot of input on what goes into that survey. And then we'll probably try to distribute that survey out by district, so that the feedback that comes back in is per district, and we can kinda.
So we're gonna be limited on our open houses this year, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wish not, but it just kinda seems like it.
Yeah.
No, no, I think you do.
We'll just, just take it, you know, a step at a time and see what really happens, but she also mentioned how most people are responding to, you know, Google surveys, or, you know, they're getting a lot of feedback like that, too, and, and then she did mention some other, um, technology programs and apps that they're using, um, that people are responding to really well.
Okay.
I don't have anymore.
It's past my daytime.
Bruce has a comment.
I do have a comment. Uh, just wanna say, uh, great, great discussion, um, it's good to see everybody speaking up, um, throwing things out here and there, uh, seen some really good things over the day, actually, and, uh, just wanna tell y'all, appreciate it, all of you and your time. Uh, I think, I think we got the right people, and we're ready to move forward, and we just wanna do it the right way, and cover all the steps, so. Just wanna say thank you for your time, appreciate it, it's great to be here today, always good to see you down here, and, uh, each of, all that you do, and, uh, Sherry, it's always so, you're just a busy gal, and, uh, I don't want you to think, uh, you're, you're just important and valuable, and, you know, that, just easy to see from all the stuff you put out, so, that's really all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just, uh, maybe close, not to, you know, take us long, but I've got, just got something that was sent here to the city, which I think is, it's about as good as it gets with someone who wants to help Hooper City, and they're from Salt Lake City. They wrote a little note, they said, earlier this week, my wife came to Hooper City Hall to get some information, she took me along so that we would be able to use the HOV lane on the freeway and be legal, so I got that kinda set the stage right there. While she did her bidding, I sat down in the ornate iron and wood bench in the lobby. I noticed that the electrical outlet cover near the bench had a, a corner missing. I envisioned that a small child could put a finger in the opening with shocking results. I am sending you this outlet cover, it would please me if you would replace the cover with kind regards, and then he signs it. He, in fact, sent this outlook cover, or this outlet cover, and if you, as you go out, and you look at that iron bench that's sitting here in the foyer, and you look at the receptacle cover, it is, there's a chip broke out of it. Here's a guy, I don't think he's just, hey, I think I can, I think I can help him. I mean, as simple as that may be, I thought that was pretty, I thought that was, that was a pretty, uh, pretty neat, that he would take the time to do that, so.
You know, that reminded me, I, I, I heard a saying, and I've got it on my refrigerator right now, you don't change the world with your opinion, you change it with your example, and.
There you go.
That's a very good example of that.
All right. Any other comments or? Okay, I don't think any other.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
There's no motions.
There's no motion.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Shawna?
Yeah.